So we all in?
Yeah.
All set, Shelley? I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 2021 Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Rush. And with that, I'll have Shelley take role of board members.
Member McPherson?
Here.
Member Werzer?
Here.
Members Strock?
Here.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Here.
Chairman Sweet?
Here. Okay, we'll review now the minutes from the last meeting of April. And if anybody has anything that needs to be corrected or changed, I'd like to hear from you now.
I have nothing.
Scott, Steve?
No, I have nothing, but I will note that review of the meeting notes was not on the agenda for the meeting.
Okay.
I did, I did find it in the, on the website.
I apologize for that. When I was updating the agenda, I eliminated something, apparently.
Okay, here, hearing that there's no changes.
Don, can I, can I interject here? Sorry, I was hesitating. So, yeah, yeah, changes. So Scott, Scott sent you a whole bunch of changes in comments. Is that what we're voting on tonight?
Yes, I sent out the amended ones.
Okay. All right. So on page four, that the setback would be 110 foot. Or the, the lot width is measured at the setback of 110 feet, not at the road frontage.
Right.
That is corrected. There was a question as to the riprap for the Landy subdivision. And I thought that we had agreed that the riprap was to be used because the Conservation Board had asked for that. That's on page six, I believe, is what I have on my minutes.
And I had the opposite, that we viewed as excessive.
Well, yes, this is how the location of the creek is. I wouldn't think with this, with this development, you know, the house site, that they would get involved in that. We're getting near the creek.
So, so, so we did not ask for the riprap?
I don't, other board members, I don't think we did.
Are we speaking of Landy or solar?
Oh, the Landy, Shelley.
We did not.
Okay, all right. And then I believe the last item I had was when we were talking about the Helios Project H9 question. The, where it's asking about the Geotech Report. And it's supposed to be with the BorinG samples, B-O-R-I-N-G, not bearing.
Good catch.
I don't know, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. If that's all the changes and comments and everything's correct, could I have a resolution to pass the minutes as amended?
I move, I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
I will second.
Okay, that's great. Having done that, we'll move on to our first public hearing.
We got a vote on those, Tom.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, Shelley, could you take a poll of a vote?
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Strock?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweet?
Hi. Okay, I want to get ahead of myself because I want to get into that. So Shelley, would you read the public hearing for our first applicant?
Notice is hereby given pursuant to the provisions of the zoning law of the Town of Rush and Section 274A and 274B of the town law. A public hearing will be held by the Planning Board of the Town of Rush at the Rush Town Hall, 5977 East Henrietta Road, Rush, New York, 14543, via Zoom on May 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM to hear all persons interested in the following application. Application 2021-04P by Rush United Methodist Church requesting a special permit for the replacement of playground area at 6200 Rush Lima Road, Rush, New York, 14543. The property is zoned R-MD Multiple Dwelling Residential.
Okay, who's here to represent this application?
So I am, my name is Alex Cruder. I'm a board member at the Promise Land Childcare, which is affiliated with Rush United Methodist Church. And then Kellyanne Williams is also on the line, who is the director of the daycare, as well as, you know, a member of the church as well.
Great. So if you would like to walk us through your, your plan, and we'll go from there. Shelley, do you have anything that you can put up for them as you go plan? Okay. So I guess if you can, if you have it, or if you can share, even share a screen or whatever.
I can share my screen if, if you like.
Okay, if you want to, I'll make your, no problem.
Cool.
There you, there you are.
Thank you. Um, so at a high level, our, our goal or our recommendation or our plan is to install a new playground structure to replace the existing structure. This playground structure will be located at the Rush United Methodist Church. The outline here is the property line of the church, probably within, hopefully, 10 to 15 feet. And as I zoom in, you'll see currently the playground structures fenced in area is this approximate light purple or light pink shaded area. The area in which the playground that we are purchasing will be going is the dark red shaded area. This will be roughly 40 by 60 feet in, in, I guess, 40 feet deep and 60 feet wide. And the structure itself will be in, require a fall surface of roughly 40 by 40 feet. I want to make sure that I show a picture as well. So this will be the structure that we'll be installing in that location. It'll be professionally installed by a commercial playground installer, I believe, out of Ohio. AAA State of Play. And our, you know, desire is to basically provide, you know, this kind of clarity, as well as kind of the formation. It's approximately, I want to say 300 feet from the nearest property line, where the property is, where the playground is going to be. And then if I zoom in here and I take a quick measurement, it's roughly 70 feet from the Lehigh Valley Trail to the, to the rear of the property, or I guess to the north side of the property. Um, we did submit the property. I forget what they call it, the special permit to the Monroe County Inspector, and I'll try to find that very quickly. And Shelley sent it to me as well. So the engineering review. Bye. I think copy to yourself, Chairman Sweet. The proposed project is type two action pursuit. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we explain the intent. The intent is to install a new playground in the existing playground area. When we were at, at your meeting last month, the conference, we didn't have a permit for the previous playground. So we wanted to make sure we went through the formal process to make sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's from the perspective of the new playground. Kind of provide some location of where the project is going to be, which I hope I've done. If not, that's, I can try to provide, we had a really hard time finding a survey with, with the structures on it. When the, the building was originally built, but we do have a, a fund. I think this might be older than myself, but it's just got a basic property map, which is what I use to try to, you know, figure out the Google lines as well. And then as far as cut sheets, I, I didn't actually know what cut sheets were. Um, but I was able to locate a PDF of the playground itself and some warranties and from the perspective of the installer. So descriptions, some fall surface areas, fall heights, use zones. Is that, is that the kind of definition of a cut sheet? I don't actually know. I apologize for not being prepared in that regard, but.
Yeah, that was, that was the intent, just so that the board and the public could see what you were proposing. So that was great. Thank you.
Perfect. So, yeah, I don't know if I need to, to keep talking or not. We're excited about this, but obviously we're here to answer questions or address any concerns that, that might come up from the board. So I can stop sharing my screen now. Or I can leave a cool picture of the playground up for you guys to, you know, look at if you'd like to. Happy to do that.
So it's, it's all, it's all plastic and there aren't any bolts or anything sticking out that it's going to hurt anybody?
No, it'll be commercial grade playground meant for young elementary school kids. It'll be plastic and steel. Hopefully that was our choice based on, you know, hopefully limited maintenance that would be required to keep it kind of long term. I hope it's a few 20 years, which we're excited about.
Well, I guess, Jeff and Scott, you worked, I believe that you did a lot of work on looking over this. So if you have any comments or any questions, as well as the other board members, please speak now.
No, no, Scott and I, Scott identified that early on that this was an allowed use in that district with a special permit. So that's why we had to have Alex and come back with the information for a special permit. The only question I guess I had, we asked about lighting, we asked about the fence is going to stay where it is, that those, it's basically just replacing playground equipment that is already there, that's been being used. And, you know, from a question I would have for Alex or Kellyanne, having children there myself years ago, if gates and access to the playground in case there was any medical emergency, there is a gate from the rear parking lot of the church, there's access there? And then I believe there's direct access to the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So the, the parking lot does move around and there is actually, I believe, a six or eight foot gate. Um, kind of right in this area within the, within the fence line on that you could theoretically almost drive a car through if you need to.
We, we've driven a dump truck back there. Through the double.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I mean, you don't wish, you don't, no wish upon it to anybody, but you know, I just thought of that. And I guess from memory, you know, that would be to make sure that that gate is still there in case, like I said, if there was a medical emergency, that they could get access to the playground.
Yep. The one other element that I failed to mention, so apologies, is that we are planning on installing a formal kind of cement and paper walkway on to make the access to the playground a little bit more safe because right now it's just kind of a spot paper and with jack, grass and gates, which is not like, it's not safe. It's just, we will be kind of formalizing that kind of walkway and access point with a more, you know, professionally installed paper walkway.
And Alex, you're talking from the parking lot to the gate?
I believe so, yep.
Okay. All right.
It'll be from the parking lot to the gate and then from the gate into the actual playground area. So like full, kind of formalized access.
Okay. Scott, I have no further questions.
Okay. Any other board members?
No, I really don't have anything else significant. Just want to make sure we went over all of Todd's questions and suggestions. And we might want to mention what the Conservation Board said, which was essentially is just adding the Lehigh Trail as a public access point to the property and the bicycle path that's required for the short form EAF.
Okay.
And in fact, we don't have to take any action on the EAF.
Right, right.
So.
According, according to the property map that we did find, there's approximately 100 feet, 100 foot strip that goes straight alongside the Lehigh Valley Trail. Um, that's kind of as a exemption containing 2.2 acres for the county of Monroe. And so that would be the roughly towards the back end of that, that kind of playground area.
That's a good presentation, Alex. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you, guys. I appreciate, appreciate your, your help and your patience with us.
So Scott, if you have, I don't have Todd's comments, did we, do you have a copy of that? Do you want to read through that?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't print it out either. I read them, but Todd, you must have them.
Yeah, he just had, he just shared them on the screen.
Yeah, Alex just went through them. There was still, so.
The only, the only thing that, you know, I recommended because of the application request, the joiner's names, you know.
Oh, yeah.
I know he didn't have a formal map, so I was just trying to.
I've got, I've got, um, I've got the one map. It's the Burnham, Raymond Burnham is the problem, kind of directly to the left or to the west of the church.
You could just mark those up on there on the Google Maps and submit that to Shelley, you know.
Sure, I can do that. Absolutely.
If the board is okay with that, you know.
That's, that's fine. That's, I think that's all right. There's quite a distance from the, any other property line anyway, but it's what we usually ask for. So I would suggest a number and, and, you know, legal name was put on the tax parcels around. So I just wanted to make sure that, that if we've touched all those comments that, that Todd had there and he had them up there. So it sounds like we have. So as we've done historically in the past, I would ask if there's any comments from the public. And if you see anybody that has a comment there on chat, Shelley, you can let them at this time state what their name is and, you know, what they have to say for comments.
Um, no one, oh, where did I go? There's no one with their hand, there's a hand up. Carl asked, has his hand up?
Hey, just, just so you know, I have no comments on the, for the public hearing, but the chat feature's been disabled.
That's a, that's up to the planning board and, you know, we decide when the chat is on and isn't, we're a timeless board and.
But you just asked her, you just asked whether there's any chat, any, any comments in the chat? So I was just curious why.
I believe.
You would ask that if you just say.
Okay, having no comments from the public. We usually ask if anybody from our town board liaisons, if you have any comments or any suggestions, now's your time to have something to say.
I'm going on my end, Don.
Okay, good.
And I'm, I'm happy with the presentation as well, Don.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay. Having heard that, I would like to take care of this application right now so that we can move on and have this, you know, wait for final hearing and.
Hold on, Don, Don, we got to close the public hearing first.
Okay.
I believe.
Yes, you're right. So.
So I'll, I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing for application 2021-04P by the Rush United Methodist Church requesting a special permit for the replacement of playground area at 6200 Rush Lima Road, Rush, New York.
Okay. So now we can move on to the rest.
Scott seconded.
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strock?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweet?
Hi.
Just, just a question for John Mancuso. I think when John Felsen was leading the meetings, at, at that point, he would essentially say, I'll declare the public hearing closed and had eliminated this motioning. Is that sufficient?
Every board does it differently. Technically speaking, the chair of the board has the authority to unilaterally close the public hearing. I think for consistency purposes, my recommendation was for the boards to follow how the town board does it, which is to poll the board so that if there is any question about the closing of the public hearing, let's say you disagree that you feel it needs to remain open for a reason that would allow the board to caucus and decide whether or not to in fact close rather than having the chair make the decision, then someone saying, well, actually, you know, I, I, I don't think we should close it, so let's reopen it. Then we have to kind of go through some more mechanics. So I think it's cleaner for the minutes. So that, that is my suggestion, but it's not required if that's what you're asking me.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We'll leave it up to Don then.
Okay. So, having taken the call, we're closed now?
Believe so.
Okay, so. I, so I've got a resolution here that we've gotten together. So now would be the time for me to read this resolution, right? And I will start reading this here. The Planning Board of the Town of Rush has examined application 2021-44P. I guess give them the glasses. Submitted by the Rush United Methodist Church, the applicant requesting a special permit to replace an existing playground equipment for use by the daycare and the church community on property located at 6200 Rush Lima Road. Tax map number 213 period 04 dash 1 dash 34 period 2, the property. And whereas the property is located at, in an RMD residential district, which allows churches and other legal institutions and the recreational facilities of charitable and not-for-profit organizations with a special use permit. Special use permit number 120 dash 7B and 120 dash 8B and 120 dash 9B of the town zoning law. And whereas the planning board has examined the application, maps and other materials filed with the application, including the short environmental assessment form, and all having reviewed the current plans and reports, including comments and reports from town professional staff, the public and other interested and involved agencies associated with the application. And whereas a public hearing and application was held on May 18th, 2021, and notice was posted and as required by law. And whereas all persons of the hearing desiring to speak on the matter were held, were, were heard, all correspondence and other matters was read. And all comments and statements that were received during the public hearing and/or at the other duly held meetings of the planning board were considered by the planning board. And now whereas for the, if it resolve that the planning board determines that this is a type two action exempt of, from the seeker review pursuant to 617 dash 5C 2 and 9 of Title VI of the New York's Code of Rules and Regulations. And it is further resolved that upon consideration by the planning board of the factors set forth under code 120 dash 69D of the zoning, town zoning law, the planning board grants a special permit based on the following findings. One, the proposed use complies with the requirements of the town zoning law. Two, the proposed use of the property is necessary and desirable to provide a recreational facility for the applicant, is the existing daycare and church community, which will contribute to the overall general well billing, well being and of the neighborhood and community. Three, the, the replacement of the existing playground equipment and granting of the special permit will not endanger the public health, safety or general welfare of the community. The property is approximately 20 acres with only 0.25 acres of disturbance located beyond the existing church building and the area protected by existing fence area and vegetation surrounding the property. Four, the use of a playground will be in harmony with the future development and will not discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent land or impair the value thereof. And it is further resolved that the site plan approval is granted subject to the following considerations. One, the use permitted by the special use permit granted by the planning board shall be limited to the location of the property marked with a blue X as provided and the plan submitted with the application. Two, no work will, is to commence until the applicant obtains a building permit from the Town of Rush. Three, the applicant must meet all other applicable town building and inspection requirements. Four, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the town engineer as indicated in the town engineer's letter dated May 3rd of 2021. Okay, having read the resolution, could I have a vote of somebody?
Don, I'll second their resolution.
Okay, having a second, Shelley, would you pull the board?
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strock?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweet?
Hi.
So Alex, Kellyanne, congratulations. And I guess at this point, so your next step would be to contact John Limbuck, the building inspector, and start to, start the process.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much for the time.
Can't wait to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, having closed that and voting on a resolution, we will now open up the Moore Park rezoning request, which is an informal discussion, basically. So Shelley, do you have anything to present on, or share map wise? Or is John Sharaba here to basically go through the plan and, you know, talk to us about what they propose?
John Sharaba is here, I believe.
Yes, I am.
And I don't believe he has anything to share, do you? Would you like me to put up the plans that we have?
Shelley, that'd be great.
Okay.
And again, I guess what I'd like to add is that the town supervisor basically and the planning, and the town board asked the planning board to review this and look for our input. They are the lead agency. They are the ones that will take public comments. They just want to see what we think of this as a planning board with our background in, you know, if it fits into the comprehensive plan. So having said that, John, if you'd like to basically state what you're being proposed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the, the quick overview of the project. You're 100% correct. Well, just to take a step back, the last time that we met about this project was back on March 16th. We met informally and I kind of reviewed the goals of the Moore family as it relates to this property. Since that time, we've made some slight modifications, more or less based on your comments and of the public meeting that we held late, late last year. And we made a formal application on March 26th to the Rush Town Board for rezoning this 69 acre parcel. So that's essentially what we've done. The plan represents our goals. It doesn't have all the engineering and grades that this board is formally, is really used to seeing. But it gives the goals and expectations of what we want to do with Moore Park. And Shelley, I think that's an older map.
It is, okay.
But.
So I have the two, I have this one. Does that one help you?
That's the older one as well. That's the older one as well.
Oh, those are the only two I have.
All right.
Let me look through some old documents and see if I can come up with something else.
Well, I'll just keep talking because that's what I do.
Explain to us how things have, you've changed or amended something since the last time you came to the planning board and getting informal. So how has it changed?
So what, what the project consists is still a private development proposing a single access road with a stub street to the Krenzer property, which is already zoned light industrial to the south. We still have nine proposed lots varying in size from three acres up to fourteen acres in size. The, uh, the stormwater management areas are still just kind of questionable in logical areas. We're still protecting the wetlands and the wetland buffer to the west. And we still have a retail portion of the projects, which is located at the southeast corner along the right away of Western Atlanta Road, which is allowed by code, by code. The major change that we had is if, if you remember back, we had a ten acre parcel located on the north side of the proposed road that was slated for a distribution center. But based on feedback that we received from the public, they were worried about trucks and idling and noise. So we were able to push that further to the west. So we put another parcel, parcel nine, which is about, and I can't see it on my cell map, but we have, we have a, a building proposed between the distribution center and the, uh, and the road, which would impact the traveling public and the, the residents along Western Atlanta Road. We also indicated some, uh, tree plantings and things like that, which we hope in the future we get to stop, speak to in more detail with the planning boards. I know that's what you're used to talking about and what we want to really look at in the future. But that's really all we have changed. Again, we made the formal application and now we're going through the process as dictated by the town board. So we're looking for impact and hopefully some kind of resolution that this is a, there you go. It's not color, but it's a, it's the plan. Some kind of resolution.
Shelley.
Town board has a good panel on what you want.
I got, I got a copy. If you want me to make me a co-host, I can throw the color map on.
That would be wonderful.
Actually, I can't do it because it's on my other computer. Can you, your email from the fourteenth of May contains the map.
Okay.
Yeah, you just sent that out, Shelley, this week.
I did. Isn't that funny that I don't have the right one? Do you said I sent it on the fourteen?
To the planning board.
John, this is Todd. It looks like your parcel nine is three hundred and seventy-seven feet wide.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
Yep, little more, point eight six, but maybe, maybe, John, you could speak to the comp plan. I think you, it's currently what are proposed in the comp plan for industrial.
The comprehensive plan in two thousand and ten.
What we're looking for, right?
That's the plan that you have up, Shelley, but it's supposed to be in color, but but so the plan that we, that we're presenting to you is in line with a comprehensive plan with all the intended uses. The only real use that we have right now is the distribution center, which is an existing business, a well-established business that's looking to move to the town of Rush due to the, the very good location and the proximity to three ninety. The, uh, the comprehensive plan and, and the location of this site, one thing that has come up that someone mentioned early on is, oh geez, the, the limits of the light industrial and the comprehensive plan are not, don't match up with this total parcel. I, I think that's just a, you know, when they, when they did the comprehensive plan, they probably saw the wetlands and tried to put an area that would not impact the wetlands. And I think we're doing that. So we do want this whole site to be rezoned to light industrial. We are going to protect the wetlands with an easement and with no development in there. But all the uses that we want are looking to meet code. There may be some special permits that may be required if a use comes in that needs town board approval. But, uh, that's really what we have. It's one of those things where in rezoning, we don't have a lot of engineering. Played out, uh, we fully understand that a traffic study is going to be required. If you think back to the last meeting we had in March, we had two residents talk about, uh, traffic and, and, uh, some issues, uh, sanitary sewer. We're still, uh, pursuing the possibility of sanitary sewer. As you can imagine, that is a great expense to bring down sanitary sewer to this area. But again, more detailed information will be provided to the planning board if this parcel gets rezoned. So essentially we're asking for you to say to the town board, yes, this has merit. If the town board takes it to another level and gets rezoned, then we do our real hard engineering and come back and see you and, and really knock out the details.
Hey, John, just real quick, do you, what commitments do you have? The, the distribution center for sure?
Yes, it's a written contract that's been signed, uh, contingent on Mr. Moore implementing this action.
Everything else though is, is, uh,
Speculative.
Speculative right now.
Correct.
So the reality, John, is you're seeking rezoning to light industrial with a singular proposed use at this time in terms of a distribution center with other lots that you would then anticipate obviously being zoned light industrial for the uses permitted in a light industrial district. Either as of right or with a special permit as they come in, you are, you, you will need to apply to the planning board then to the extent you need additional approval. Is that sort of where you're, what you're thinking?
Yes, you know, in, in more alignment with what we're looking, we'd like to probably go for an overall preliminary approval with an outline of these goals and create this entity. And then as, uh, people come in and commit to developing in the area, create the parcel and come in for subdivision and site plan approval for each one. I think I want to look at this like holistically and regionally for stormwater management, water flows and things such as that. But, uh, it's definitely a, an if come basis. I may have done Mr. Moore a disservice with saying that this is our only interested party. I mean, there are, we have a lot of interested people. But this is really the only one that's put pen to paper with a distribution center.
Any other questions or statements from board members?
Yeah, just, just Scott, just so I understand the process here. My thought was that you were going for a, a subdivision approval of the whole lot, the whole property. And you might at the same time come with a site plan request application for the distribution warehouse. Any other, uh, lots though that, that are subdivided would have to come back at the appropriate time with anything concrete that came up, right?
So I guess it's even more simplistic than that. I guess what we're asking for is you to follow along with the town board's procedure for rezoning. And, and give them the nod that yes, this has merit. And if it's rezoned, we will come back to you for an overall preliminary approval of the layout. And then, uh, and subdivision for subsequent parcels. So the, uh, I think, I think it's in the best interest of the board and the town to, and maybe Todd, you can rein in on this to come up with some kind of overall approval of the project and then, and you're correct, and to subdivision and site plan for each parcel as it does come in.
John, I can't speak for the board, but, um, if they move forward rezoning, I have seen the first step. And then we talked about some of the engineering challenges. The stormwater would be one that we'd want to see probably comprehensive. And I know if you don't have specific impervious areas, you know, that could be a little challenging, but we would get into that as we, if, if it's rezoned. The sewers, I know was another big question. So where are you with that? Are you still in discussions with the town of Henrietta?
Uh, we have a verbal commitment with the town of Henrietta and we've kind of stopped at that point with the engineering efforts to do more than that. I do, are, from our engineering analysis, that it would be some kind of, uh, lift station and force main from this project to the gravity sewer. Which would all be private, but not a district user would be established with the town of Henrietta.
And then the traffic, obviously traffic takes care of itself, but again, it would have to be some kind of, uh, traffic study based on proposed uses. So we'd have to probably have, John, you can weigh in on this, a better, more concrete, you know, unless they want to go with the generic, but I, I'd prefer to know the uses typically.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there's, there's, there's a couple of steps to this and I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves in terms of where we are in the process, but just to be forward thinking. So right now, the board, this board, the planning board needs to look at this more on a conceptual, high-level use basis. Does the overall concept of a development of this type with these proposed uses? How does this interact with the town's comprehensive plan? The charge from the town board to the planning board at this point is to just give a review of the concept to advise the town board as to whether or not, in your opinion, you know, there are any concerns or consist, or, or conversely, i- if there is consistency with the comp plan to give them a positive or negative recommendation back. When we get back to the town board, we're going to have to declare lead agency for this project. It'll be a coordinated type one action. The nature of the, of the development as it unfolds, uh, John Sharaba, will have to talk about whether or not we're going to drill down into specific uses to the point where this is sort of a concrete proposal, or if it's more of a generic type of thing, where you're sort of looking for generic things that may be more of a, of a generic, uh, environmental assessment review that might have to get more focused as you get further on. That really is going to be dependent on how concrete you feel you are at this stage versus, you know, later on in the process. But that's, that's more of an issue for the town board as lead agency to have to decide what the most, uh, efficient, um, and adequate environmental review is going to be for this, uh, concept. But for now, I think it's more simple than that for the planning board. It's just going to be, we have this plan, this is the concept, you know, various uses, engineering firm, research center, distribution, electrical manufacturing. Are these types of uses and a zoning of light industrial, is that something that is, uh, consistent or not with the town's comprehensive plan? That's really the, the, the minimal question that the, the planning board at this point should be sort of focused on to be able to provide some input to the town board.
And John, what do you, what do you see as our timetable for this? How long should we, um, look into this before we come up with a, a decision? And, um, you know, what, what's your recommendation, I guess?
Well, unless John Sharaba tells the board that there might be additional submissions forthcoming, I think the board has everything it's going to be getting at this phase. It has a concept plan, it has a submission, um, some analysis from the applicant about its uh, own review of the town comprehensive plan. And so you need to look at those materials and decide, you know, uh, do you agree? Do you disagree? Do you have your own opinions that you wish to, you know, formulate as to that question? And then we can memorialize that in, you know, a resolution back to the town board. If the board wishes to do this, um, you know, by the June meeting, certainly that's feasible. It does not need to go any further. This isn't a seeker review or a site plan review. This is a recommendation. So typically within thirty, within thirty days or so, uh, this should be capable of being accomplished.
Okay. Sounds good.
Chairman, if I could point out, I, I, we took great care to make sure that we reviewed the light industrial code. And I think you'll see that all the uses that we propose are in line with that, uh, existing code.
With that or with a special use permit is what you're saying?
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Great.
And, and we did, um, you know, as far as more detail, we did, you know, we submitted this plan with this, these type of uses to our traffic study consultant and they're doing their review and their, their numbers are going to be based on that.
Okay. Yeah, with a, um, uh, distribution center and you had said before that you were talking about like eight, ten trucks at certain times. That's pretty much a, you, you know that pretty much what, what the capability or, and what the, um, what the amount of traffic is going to be and, and when. So, I mean, you had told us that, uh, the last, uh, informal that you were at with us. So nothing has changed from what you told us before, is my understanding, right?
I don't have a complete hundred percent, uh, understanding of his business, but, um, as, as I described it before and as I know, it's, it's an office use with, uh, trailers that do come to the site. They drop off and pick up loads and travel over road. You know, they're not, it's, it's, uh, they're gone most of the time. There's not, uh, hourly, uh, trucks coming in all day long. It's more of a, you know, they come and they go and they're on the road for four or five days and then they come back. The, the building we show on the back way in the, on the western side of the building is the truck part, the actual engine and drive train that'll be parked on indoors. And that's where those are tended to be stored. And then the rest of the building is the loading dock area and office space. So I know that the, the owner of that facility is, is really in tune with what he wants and this is in line with his goals.
Other board members?
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, well, John, you, you may remember when you met with us previously, I mentioned that the setback to residential area for the, uh, distribution center has to be seventy-five feet. So you, you may remember that, but just elected not to change the, uh, the diagram.
Oh, on the, on the schedule?
Well, the schedule and the building, I believe, is not seventy-five feet away.
Well, the distribution center is, had to be five hundred feet away.
Sorry, what was that?
I, I, I'll review that. No problem.
It's a special note because it's bordering a residential, uh, zone.
Correct. I'll make sure that time there.
The north, north side, the north side.
Okay.
All right, Don, I'll go ahead with my comments. If you're ready.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
All right. So I, I understand, you know, that we're, we're looking at this at a, at a very high level right now that the town board, I've kind of been following this project from the beginning. So I understand what the town board is asking of us, um, for, for our comments. And just what John Mancuso, Attorney Mancuso suggested is that, uh, does this fit with the comprehensive master plan? And so I, I am on the, um, comprehensive master plan update committee. And part of our review is, is looking at the nineteen ninety-three, uh, comprehensive master plan and then with the suggestions for the twenty-ten update. And looking at the nineteen ninety-three plan here in front of me, you know, it clearly states in the plan in ninety-three, they talked about, uh, section four, three is the town's desirable existing character, um, i- is a factor in attracting residents and basically keeping the hamlet and things like that. For, for keeping the character of the town. But they also understood, the forefathers understood that, um, the I three ninety interchange is, I mean, it's, it's right there. It's, it's at the gateway of our town. And in the, in the plan, it says that the I three ninety interchange with Route fifteen and two fifty-one has an even greater potential to affect future development because it puts Rush in a special new relationship with other communities. This is the first interchange south of Rochester metropolitan area, which makes Rush the primary gateway between urbanized and rural areas of the south side of the metropolitan area. It makes Rush and the rest of the region more accessible to each other. In addition, because it is close to the I three ninety interchange with the New York State thruway, I ninety, and because I three ninety connects other expressways, it just goes on to continue. Of course, we all know this, we all use three ninety, we all use the thruway. I guess with reading that, and then I'm going to go to section. I guess with reading that, and then I'm gonna go to section five, four. And it talks about commercial development. And it's talking about limiting commercial development in the hamlet of Rush to the uses that are of modest scale and that are compatible with the scale and character of the existing development. And it also says to encourage commercial land uses that are larger than that would generate more traffic and locate near the interchange for I three ninety, routes fifteen and two fifty-one. So with with that being said, I guess I'll I'll be the first to go on record to say that I I I have no problem with the use of that property going to limited industrial for because of its location. It is right next to the o- o- off ramp, on ramps to three ninety, and it 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 is right in the ninety-three comprehensive master plan. Now, there's there's been question that we're reviewing the comprehensive master plan right now, and do we wait and hold the project until we get through with our review, which could be upwards of eight months to a year, or do we just go ahead and give our recommendations or a review to the town board? I'm it's I'm a single member, it's I'm only one vote, but having been here through the ninety-three comprehensive plan and the twenty-ten update, I do not see it changing. I do not see the intended use of this parcel changing. And I believe limited industrial is is a good use for that or a good a a allowable change. And that would be up to the town board, of course, as lead agency. We look at limited industrial in our town code currently. It does allow for distribution centers with follow with conditions under a special permit. There are other uses as far as offices, research labs, things of that nature, just no more than five percent can be retail. It is spelled out very clearly in our limited industrial district of the town code. Another reason I feel this this is a good, a good point of of use for that land, or I guess a recommendation is, again, to keep the heavy traffic out of the hamlet. I was not part of the charrette committee that looked at the hamlet, but I believe that the hamlet right now, i- if you had a considerable amount of truck traffic in that hamlet, it would it would change the hamlet forever. And if we can, as a town, as as a, ask the town board if we could keep the truck traffic out of the hamlet, keep the business up by the three ninety interchange, I think that would be a a smart development use for for that area for the interchange. So with all that being said, there's a few comments. Of course, John Sharaba, you mentioned the traffic study. That was brought up right from the beginning, from the meetings that were held by Mr. Moore, and then I I believe the town board, you've been to the town board, I've listened to it all. What I'd like to see in the traffic study is southbound fifteen, the amount of traffic. There should be a right-hand turn lane is what I feel. And I I know this would get into site plan, but I think it's the the traffic study is is going to help the town board determine the the potential buildout for that area. So southbound fifteen, northbound fifteen should have a right lane bypass for traffic flow to continue north if there's trucks trying to turn left into this, so into this industrial, light industrial park. It was brought up by a a town citizen about the on-ramp to three ninety north. There's a very difficult turn for tractor trailers that would need to be addressed in the traffic study. I've seen tractor trailers now that get on southbound three ninety by mistake off the thruway and then need to turn around and head back north, and it is difficult to make that curve. As far as you you have moved the building, John, away from fifteen, over back for the distribution. And again, I I think whether there needs to be some berms for noise and lights that that should be looked at and and landscaping plantings, things like that. I know that's part of site plan review, but that also needs to be looked at, I guess, for us to run, take it back to the town board. Make sure that we're covered as as a town for landscape plantings and that. Also, look at the lighting ordinance. Make sure that we're covered in a situation like this. The lighting ordinance for spillage onto neighboring properties. And now, of course, the 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 million-dollar question is, is it going to be sewer or on individual septic systems? And do you go ahead and do some preliminary PRC tests on that parcel and get Monterey County Health involved, looking at the amount of buildout? And how many people could, what the potential would be for all those buildings? How many workers and what the what the load would be on that, on that, on those soils for septic? So I know I, there was a lot, but I did my notes on it. That's all I have done.
Okay. Rick or Steve, do you have any any comments before I make my comments? I'll wait until the end here.
I I had one comment, Don. I concur with what Jeff was saying. I was interested when he was talking about current comprehensive plan and then, you know, perhaps waiting eight months to a year. So I feel this applicant has done everything the comprehensive plan states now, so making them wait another eight months to rule on this, I don't think is fair. So, yeah, I agree, we we should do this as quickly as we can.
Okay.
I'm also, I agree. There's no sense in waiting to for the updated and comprehensive plan here.
Okay, well, having reviewed this and also being on the committee for the new comprehensive plan update and having looked through this, you know, plan from ninety ninety-three and then an update in two thousand and ten. As Jeff, as Jeff stated, it talks about this area being a good place for for growth for light industrial because it's right on, you know, the interchange of three ninety. And I believe that, you know, if we're gonna have any growth anywhere, this would be the appropriate place to have it because we don't want it in the hamlet. We don't want it in in some of the other parts of the town that are more rural. And this is where truck traffic is. So I would think that a light industrial and, you know, as the, you know, master plans have outlined, this was something that was one of the steps that never took place for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but I have no problem with this if it's done right. And by all means, there has to be a full-scale, you know, plan on in review of what what kind of traffic is going to be put on fifteen? What changes need to be made? How much traffic there is? How many trucks to see if it if it's appropriate that it can be done? Also, I wonder if if it does go by, you know, septic, if the lot size is a big enough, it's appropriate size for your distribution center, I'm not sure. And that's a question that has to be dealt with or figured out. I think before the town board changes a, you know, zone, if this is gonna be a major proportion with a special use permit with a you know, trans, truck transfer facility. So that's all I've got to say right now. And as Scott Strach said, you know, the north parcel of Crenzers that is on the north side, complete side of this property is currently farmed, but it's, you know, R thirty, which you know, could be, you know, houses someday. So it has to have a setback and appropriate, and as Jeff said, you know, we have to look at landscaping and screening and that sort of stuff, but that again is part of the site plan. So I guess that's all I've got to say. And I don't know if we want to think this over and, you know, write down basically what we've talked about in the next meeting, formulate a resolution and and vote on it to be sent to the town board as, you know, recommendations. If anybody else has anything to to add in at this point, let me know.
Mr. Chairman, this is John Sharaba. Can I can I say a couple of words?
Sure.
So I I appreciate the board's comments. I I believe I totally missed modifying the plan to that seventy-five-foot setback on our on our concept plan, so I will definitely look at that. I will, we will definitely have a traffic study before this plan comes back to this board. I think Jeff is very eloquent in the details that he's looked for. And actually, you're right in line with the state DOT. What we did is we submitted a pre-application plan to the DOT, and they told us what they wanted us to study, and I think you're right on with everything that they said. We also will, before we come back to you, have a full understanding if we are gonna pursue sanitary sewer or not. It's really comes down to dollars and cents. Obviously, if this site's not rezoned, there'll be no sanitary sewer. We gotta look at what that, you know, what's that million dollars of sewer gonna get us versus what we can propose? As far as sewer as it relates to the distribution center, there, right now, I think it's got twelve employees. He does expect a modest upgrade with this site. So let's say twenty employees. I don't see a at at fifteen gallons per day per employee. I mean, you're looking at a at a at a leach field, maybe twice the size of a residential home. I think we have room on there. But I know that my boss would be mad at me if I didn't ask this question. We're trying to keep this project moving in a logical way, and we want to get back to the town board as soon as possible. And we didn't know if there's a way, if you can make a resolution tonight, knowing that you're gonna get a full, you know, if we if it gets to the town board and and we're fortunate to get rezoned, it's definitely coming back to you. And we're just looking at timing and trying to keep this project in the momentum that we have. If we're not heard on June, I don't know when we'll, if we're heard on June, I'm gonna get into July and August to the town board and the the dates and the months just keep clicking by. So I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, so I'm gonna ask it. And then I I appreciate the board's time tonight, and I'll and I'll be quiet.
If if I could say something, ultimately, Don and the board, it's up to you to decide whether you want to craft that resolution tonight. From a timing standpoint, I don't know that the July, the June meeting of the planning board will really materially impact the timeline of the project because the town board is going to also need at the next meeting. We still have to declare intent to be lead agency, and we need to start that process at the town board level. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the town board level to start its process moving forward, which I think can also move in in parallel track with the with the town planning board doing its, finishing up its resolution for this issue. So certainly, between now and June, I think both boards will have some things they have to do to start the mechanics of of getting the review underway. But ultimately, as I said before, it's up to this board whether it wants to try to craft something tonight. I, you know, my my preference would be to, you know, Jeff, I think you had a very good outline of things. I think that could very well be the, you know, the starting point for putting that in writing in terms of a resolution to provide back to the town board.
Hey, so John, John, I I I have no problem tonight or even at the at the next, you know, at our next meeting, and so why don't we do it at the next meeting? How about I go ahead and work with you on on my comments, and we draft that into a resolution, share it with the rest of the board, and then I I mean, I'm I'm, I'll be ready to do something at the June meeting. I don't know how everybody feels.
Well, that's, this is Scott. That sounds good to me to have somebody draft up something. I I just want to say I have mixed feelings. Recognize that probably is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure why the comprehensive, why the zoning districts don't show it now. But I, regardless, we gotta remember, this is a primary entrance to the town of Rush on Route fifteen, if not the primary entrance. So whatever's done has to pretty aesthetically, pretty good-looking. I want to, I would caution that we are very sure that when we word this resolution that we don't make it sound like the planning board is giving its approval. First of all, we cannot give approval. It's not our role. Right? Second, rumor is already out there that we have approved it from first time we we talked about this subject. So this isn't, we we are not approving. We can say we feel this consistent with the comprehensive plan and that, given all the safeguards built into the site approval subdivision, the site approval process, site plan approval process, no, it can be managed. I want to be very careful that we don't look like we're approving this.
That's why I think we should. I think we should.
Talking about emotionally, that it's not our job to say this is a good thing or a bad thing. We should be saying it it's consistent and it can be done.
I agree, and that's why I think that we shouldn't just jump it at writing the resolution tonight. I think we should carefully wait what we what we see as a plan and what the comprehensive plans have said and basically take our resident, you know, our recommendations back to the town board as, you know, as with caution, you know, and that certain things would have to be done to make things work right. And you're you're absolutely correct. You know, this is the what the first thing that somebody's gonna see getting off three ninety, the town of Rush. So it's got to, if it's done, and it's supposed to be light industrial, it has to be done, so it's it's it's, it looks good. Not like you're walking and you're coming off the expressway with your car and and you see a factory zone. Any other comments?
I think, Don, the only thing I would add right right to tail end, I mentioned about landscaping and lighting ordinances and things like that. If I could have maybe some input from Scott, yourself, and Rick, who've been on the board here for quite a few years, prior to me coming back on the board. Any any stumbling blocks with those issues on prior projects? Have you found any issues with the current ordinance or the current code on lighting or things like that with spelling onto neighboring properties? That would be something, I think, it's our, it's our job to give a heads up to the town board if they need to look at those codes or if we think that they need to be a little stronger or a little different worded. Let's look at that now rather than get down the road. And when we get into a a potential site plan review of of a project, and then we feel that the lighting or the screening is not proper, and our hands might be tied at that point because of what's written in the code, and we might not be able to ask for that little extra or a change.
That's reasonable. Okay, I think I think we're all on the same page with this, and we could work on this to see what we're gonna draft and, you know, what kind of recommendations we're gonna make in June to make a resolution to send to the town board as the lead agency they are. So we'll go on from there. And I'll have Stelly read the tabled application for the next applicant. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time. Have a good evening.
You too.
This is Carl. There's there's no, there's no other comments at this time?
No.
All right. I will write them down and send them to you. This is not consistent completely.
Well, we're not the lead agency. You should make your comments, and we're just gonna make a recommendation. So when it gets to the town board and they get to the point where they're gonna review that, that's when the public has the opportunity to verbally and in written form, make comments and suggestions to the town board as lead agency.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll be at time for a public hearing at the at that time at our town board meeting on this matter.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
A lot of, lot of issues.
Application twenty twenty dash zero one S Helios Energy LLC for Rush Solar Farm One and Rush Solar Farm Two, represented by Richland Resources LLC. regarding a referral from the town board of the town of Rush for a report and recommendation on the creation of a tier-three solar energy system overlay district for two-tier, three-solar energy systems. The property, the project is forty-seven-point-two acres, and the property is located at five four zero Honeyeye Falls, number six road, Rush, New York, one four five four three, and is zoned R thirty.
Okay, who do we have Shelley to represent Helios this evening?
I believe Chandra is here.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I was going to say I am on.
Okay, great. If you could, I understand that you have changed your initial project outline and that you have come with the changes to us. And I understand that with the downsizing of this, basically go through the process of of how you see that this is going to be a better solution and bring us up to date with the changes.
Sure. So I I also have Dave Ingles from Ingles and Associates. I believe he's on also.
Yes. Hi, hi. Good evening, everybody. This is Dave Ingles from Ingles and Associates. We've worked with Chandra, putting together the site plans for the solar arrays.
So I will briefly share my screen and
Please.
to show what changes we made to the previous design. So let me see. I guess I need permission to share the screen.
Don't I have you? Was it sharing? Let me find you.
It says.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Actually, this is quite simple. This was our previous design. So we took five acres of panels out from the southeast side. And as you know, that this this particular parcel, as you go from west to east, the topo, it the the slope actually goes up. So one of the issues was that on the southeast side, the landscaping that we had was on the at the lowest point, which rendered it somewhat ineffective because as you go further east, the slope goes up and therefore you could see more panels. So what we did was if you look at, if you look at this new design, we took out all the panels in about five to six acres in the southeast side and moved the screening up further east so that the screening is now at a much higher point of planting than it was before. And then we wrapped the screening around also before it was, it was mostly screened to the south and then wrapped around a little bit going the here in the corner. And now we have the screening wrapped around all the way up to this point. There are some visuals that we've created. Looking, obviously, the sore point was to look from this road over here, looking east. So I'll have Dave Ingles take over and share some of the visuals we've created, showing that this marked improvement in screening compared to before. So I'll stop sharing.
So you didn't have any of the the visuals with the screening that with your new plan?
We do. We we do. That's why I stopped sharing because Dave Ingles can share his screen and go through the.
Okay, good. That's what I.
Sure. Hi.
Okay.
So I don't know if I need permission.
Shelley, can you give Dave Ingles permission for screen sharing? I guess Chandra, why Shelley's working on that, you also moved the project closer to Honeyeye Falls number six road. Originally, it was three hundred foot setback, and now you're at the two hundred foot setback. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We moved it a little closer to the road so we could capture some of that space we've lost by moving it further east.
Okay. Further, yeah.
Chandra, last time on the diagram you showed where you moved that, how many feet of elevation did we take out with this new plan? Based on the last one, how how much farther up on footage? I think last time you were down at like six ten, and I can't see where you're at now for.
Six twenty-six looks like the farthest west.
Thank you.
Can you guys see my screen yet?
Yes.
You can.
Yes.
Can you see my cursor here? This is this is the area where we took out the
Yes.
panels and moved them up the slope. It was about elevation six-ten down here. And we've moved them up to the trees and the panel, the panels up to about elevation six-thirty. So we're trying to get more up on the crest of the hill. As we get more up on the crest of the hill, that actually helps with the screening from Woodruff Road and from the from the west southwest corner. Like Chandra said, we also added a complete row of the giant green arborvitae's all the way to the existing tree line. And then that picks up the existing tree line along the west side. And we also wrapped it right around the the north side. So with that being said, we have a rendering. We have a rendering here. This was this was this was what it looked like previously, where we had just this corner wrapped and the panels came all the way down closer closer to Woodruff, closer to the west. So we pushed these up the slope by about twenty feet in elevation. So this is the old layout dated February. And now what we've done here is we've taken the trees, we've extended them all the way along and past the panels. And you can see that that's made a big difference in terms of screening through 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 here as the panels are pushed up to the top. This would be the before, where you can see all the panels. That was the concern at the last meeting. So five-acre reduction pushed them up to the crest and continued the screening all the way to the existing wood line. I guess those would be the the highlights.
Dave, I have a question. So Jeff Warner here. So as we look at this new visual, what is the what is the highest elevation of this parcel? Because if you've moved it up to six-thirty and then you have fourteen-foot screening, that would give you a six-forty-four.
Correct.
What is?
It's like it's like six-fifty-two, it looks like. So if we leave, yeah, let me leave this here, and then I think I can get us back to the site plan. Might be hard to read this map. Mine looks like it's around six-fifty, six-fifty-two, being that plateau up on top. Okay. Yes, yeah, I think you're probably, that sounds about right. So you you still have a good twenty-five feet of elevation change from the west to the plateau. Yeah, I'm seeing six-forty, six-forty-eight. This looks like a six-fifty contour right right through here.
That's I just had that question. Thank you.
That's quite a marked difference in terms of definitely definitely helped mitigate any visual by pushing up to the pushing the panels to the top and reducing reducing the acreage and pushing up the screening with it. So we did add some additional with the additional trees. We added just just a quick summary. On the tree count, we were previously at four hundred and seven of the giant green arborvitae's. Now we're at five fifty-seven. So there's an increase of one hundred and fifty trees in aiding the visual screening. So.
But if I do my math correctly, bringing up the slope to what you said was six-twenty, and we got fourteen-foot trees to for a screening. So you got the high point is six-fifty-two. So there's another, there's about eighteen to twenty feet that's still going to be visible.
Plus, you got the height of the panels. Sure. We're actually up to six-six-thirty. So six-thirty plus fourteen would be the six-forty-four. Right. So then your your crest, but it does it does. If we go back to the map, it does slope off of that. So all of this area here, like this is a six-twenty contour, which which flows all the way through the site here. So so instance, this is six-twenty, something like that. So if we're up to six-six-forty-four is way, way up here.
And what's a what's a top height of your average panel from the ground?
I think we're I think we're we're about ten feet.
Okay.
So.
I think I think it is safe to, I think it is safe to surmise in general that, given the contours, the way they are, yeah, it would not, it would be impossible to screen the six-fifty contour for sure.
But as you can, as you can see, this is six-six-forty-four right here in blue.
Right.
And it actually wraps wraps around like this. So in terms of any potential visibility, would only be would only be this area here. Right here.
Yeah, just a part of.
Just this very crest.
Yes.
Some reason my marker's not working, but it would be right here. And again, there really isn't any close view sheds that would be looking up here. We took some photos from Woodruff, and there is a fair amount of vegetation with this tree line here that we're not taking into account. So if you were if you were over on Woodruff Road, you wouldn't, you would not be getting the view.
Dave, could you give me an idea of the distance from from neighboring properties with this new plan? The greatest distance, which would be the southernmost point and then the northernmost point? I see the dotted the two-hundred-foot setback, but what are we talking now? How far?
Measuring measuring from where to where?
Of from the Mulligan Farm property line to the southwest corner.
Way over here. I can't really measure off of this, but that's a good point, right? This is a two-hundred-foot offset. So if we want two, four, six, eight.
Eight hundred feet.
You're you're twelve, you're you're over a thousand, well over a thousand feet.
I believe I can measure and I'll do it.
It depends on where you measure, but it's 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 well over a thousand feet. And in any visual perspective, would be screened by this existing vegetation. I know we've showed Joe has showed us to to the board before, I believe.
So I I just I'd like a measurement on that. And then if you move your map down a little to show further to the north of the project, I'd like to see it. I believe the closest point would be at the Marvin property line and Sims property line.
Right here?
Yeah, basically, there's your pinch point there. So from from their prop, from their joint line over to the project.
So again, so from the property line itself would be about five hundred feet, hundred, four hundred to five hundred feet. This here's two hundred. Then another two hundred would be about where my cursor is.
Right.
About five about five hundred feet to the closest panel plus plus, you know, the depth of their lot itself, which is another probably five hundred feet.
And again, again.
For their lot, though, I'm looking at the, you had to read the property line. So that's that's where it matters most is there.
Sure. Here's the existing screening, which whoop, which which helps as well. You know, trying to look at any kind of view shed pointing pointing toward the array.
Yeah, it's it's about five hundred feet at that northern point and about nine hundred to nine fifty on the southern more southern most point.
Okay, thank you.
This this is Scott. I think it's a major improvement in the southwest corner by by moving the screening up the grade. When you get up towards that plateau, it makes a huge difference. The problem is, I see it, is still further north. Where, remember, I showed pictures from the Marvin property with that barn that you could readily see from the project overlooking towards Woodruff Road and from Woodruff Road, looking past the barn to the project. And it really hasn't changed all that much right there. Furthermore, as you go up further to the north on the very north side, that elevation is down around five hundred and two feet. So you're still fifty feet below the the top plateau. And I realize there's no house to the north, but it is somebody's land. And I think that whole project would be visible over the screening from the north because it's quite a bit higher elevation on the on the adjacent property.
You're you're talking of the northern property, the property north of this?
The property north of that is a huge problem that look right over the screening just like the southwest corner used to look. And I think even in the center around the Marvin property, you're still going to have a same problem.
We've added vegetation on the the north side here where my cursor is. We've added the double row of arborvitae's. So.
Yes. So that you're gonna look right over top of that, just like.
I think this is actually, this is actually lower down here.
So, yeah, but at the at the the property is quite a bit higher. It goes up from there.
It slopes up.
So. I would I would suggest you do some side elevations. And it takes all this guesswork out of it of what you can see. If you do side elevations and draw in the screening and the and the panels and it has to include the adjacent properties, the neighbors, it's very clear what you'll be able to see.
Scott, I believe I just drew an elevation of the north property. It's about, it's on the on the southernmost point, it's about six hundred feet. And then it goes up, I believe. I could to about six-twenty. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
All right. Shelley, can you allow me to share my screen, please? All right. So Scott, you're talking about this property here on the north?
I, yeah. I'm not exactly sure. Okay, so you you do the elevations there. Is that what we're seeing?
Yeah, you can do elevation. So I drew a line here.
Okay.
You want to check the elevation of this?
But what what I'd like to see. But what, what I'd like to see is the view from the north looking south.
Yeah, I understand, the elevation, if, when you do the elevation, it'll show you, for example, this point is six hundred and twenty feet, and if you come further this way, this is about six hundred feet around here. And then it goes up to about six thirty feet here. So, and then as you, you see, as you traverse this line, the, the profile below shows you the elevation.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is about, like I said, this corner is about six fifteen, and then as you, as you go further west, it goes down to about six hundred. And then when you come up here, it goes up a little bit.
Yeah, that goes, that goes down into the wetland, so where would be the concern for the, for the sensitive visual or sensitive receptor? That would be the concern from the north.
I presume over towards Woodruff on the, on the west, that as, as the property goes up there.
So around here, you're saying, you see my cursor around here, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so draw a line, yeah, draw a line from there to the north property line.
From here, I already did, right? This is the, but Scott, you're saying this, this road, this part of the road here is the concern, is that what you're saying?
Well, whatever's high over there, I know when, when you're standing on the project property, you can see that whole green field very well, and it slopes upward there.
Oh, but this point is about six hundred and thirty feet. As you can see, it's about six thirty to six forty, and let's see what the project is at.
The project is at like six hundred, six oh eight to the north.
Right, around here is six.
So you got, you got a pretty good, pretty good elevation change there.
The project around the north is six oh eight, six ten, six twelve. Yeah, there's one contour that goes to six oh eight, but then the contours go all the way to six twenty, six twenty-four. So it, it, yeah.
Yeah, so you wouldn't, you would not see much of the array at all from, from Woodruff, you would see may, maybe a very few of the panels in the very northwest corner.
Yeah, in the northwest corner here, you'll see some, but it's not really all of the project.
Very minimal.
Yeah, this part of it goes up. Yeah.
Because you go up to six, you go up to six thirty in the array real quick.
Yes, if you look at the contours here.
And really, you have to add fourteen feet, so really, you only have to be six twenty.
Right, which is around here, so this, this corner is what you'll see is what you're saying, Dave, correct?
Very, very, very small amount, yep.
Yeah.
But, but that's not taking into account the existing forest there, I think there's a fair amount, you'd be cut off by the corner right where your hand is there. If you, if you drew a line, you can't, you can't see around the corner, so to speak.
I, you can see, you can see the field from Woodruff.
Yeah, he's, I think Scott is saying as you come up this road here.
Yeah, you've got a pretty good view.
Look at it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure you're, you're correct, Scott, I think as you come up the street here, probably you'll see some of it.
I can show you, I can show you the pictures.
No, I understand, we, we, we agree with what you're saying, you'll probably see some of the field.
The problem is of the very northwest corner of the panels is down around six hundred and two feet.
Yes, that's true, and then as you come up the street, but I, I have to think from this street, from this point to here is probably fifteen hundred feet or two thousand feet. Yeah, I understand you could see it, but it's also pretty far.
Yeah, I don't know if you even know what it was.
John, with the technology that you have on the screen right now, could you look at the southeast corner of the project and show the elevations up in there?
Here?
Yeah, or, or kind of in the middle a little bit, that, at the highest elevations.
Oh, we could see that in the contour map, which is right here.
Because Scott, I don't think he, I, I know what you're asking for, you're looking at side elevations, looking from the north-south boundary line from that other parcel, looking directly south at the project, is that correct?
Yeah, and, and kind of southeast from Woodruff and then south from, directly looking south from just north of the project.
Yeah.
So he's saying looking south directly north from this, this parcel here, correct, Scott?
Yes.
And then as you traverse this road from, from here to here, as you look through, I mean, I look at the project here, okay. Yeah, all I'm saying is as you come down this road, it's pretty far, from this parcel. Yeah, we'd have to look at the contours of this parcel, or this is at around six fifteen, six hundred feet. And then it's fairly flat here at about six fifteen, you look at this entire field here, it's, it looks like it's about six, six oh two here, about six fifteen here. So it looks like this whole parcel is about, the high point is here, which, which is why from the street you can see it. But the parcel itself is fairly flat, if you look at this part of the parcel, it's showing it's about six hundred and highest point is about six eighteen, six twenty, and then it goes down further. So I, I'm not, I don't think you'd see much from here by looking at this elevation profile. Yes, it is true that this is around six hundred here, but as you come further east, it goes up to six twenty, so they kind of match up.
But, but from looking from the north, you can see all the way up the hill to six fifty-two, and the panels will be up around six sixty.
Exactly.
Uh, that's true, yes. So, yeah, I mean, if you're looking from, yeah, you're, look at the high point, probably.
I think you'll be seeing about fifty, fifty feet of elevation of panels there.
Looking from where?
Looking from the north, from the northwest.
Anyway, if the, if the, if the exercise here is to is to gauge how much you can see, I mean, we, I think we are all in agreement, you will see some of the pounds, for sure. I mean, that, that's, that's just a fact, because of the elevation, you're correct. But it's not going to be all of the entire solar park, obviously, and there'll be some corners of it, so.
At a, at a, and at a very great distance, too.
Yeah, and from a very, yeah, and from a pretty far distance, I mean, I don't know how far an eye can see, I think it can see on a good day pretty far, so. It's true, you could see some of the panels. I think we have to establish that, you know, no matter how many visuals we draw or how much how many trees we plant, unless we plant fifty-foot trees, some of the panels are going to be visible.
Well, I guess, I guess in submation, I would say that this is a, a much better screen plan, but there's no way, our, our law says that it should be completely screened, and there's no way without a variance that you could do this, because, you know, obviously, there's still going to be places that are higher than, I mean, from that north property at a certain, as Scott said, at a certain location, you'd be able to stand and look to the south, and the hill rises with these, where these panels would be, there's no way that you're ever going to screen them a hundred percent, so.
Don, the only way that screening could be accomplished is like a terrorist stepped screening program on that parcel and have screening at different elevations, and then you screen within those, within those elevations, that, that. But that's, that's probably not feasible for the project, and, and when you add more vegetation like that, it's going to cut down, of course, on the solar panels.
Almost like, like you're saying, like hedgerows through the middle of the project.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in a solar farm, you can do that, I mean, if you're interpreting hundred percent screening as literally hundred percent screening where you, I I cannot see anything, then you're correct, but I don't think the other project you approved meets that criteria. Did they get, I'm not sure if they got a variance, I'm pretty sure they didn't, so it doesn't meet that criteria, so it is, if, there is some subjectiveness, I have to assume. Because the other project is only screened along. I forgot what the road name is, Henrietta Road, I believe. And it's not, I mean, you could see it, you could definitely see it from the freeway. I know there is vegetation, but I've, I've seen it, and you could see some parts of it, again, it's not much, but some parts of it, just like you could see some parts of ours. Yes, I agree that this is, you could see more parts of this than the other project, but then again, you know, if you apply a hundred percent screening as such, I don't think any project, including the one you approved, would meet that criteria. So.
I understand, I'm saying, I'm just stating a fact, and like I said, this is, this is screened much better. You know, it, it looks, it looks like, without seeing actual visuals, it looks like it would be much better on the top of the hill. Wouldn't show as much panels towards the west of, from locations on Woodruff Road, but there's still, you know, from six fifty-two and another eight to ten feet, you're at six sixty, and, you know, with six fifty-two and then fourteen feet, you're at like six thirty-four, so you're still looking at like eighteen or twenty feet. It's much better than, than the proposal before, and I applaud you that, that it screens, try, it attempts to screen this much better. But, you know, I'm just stating what our law says, and, you know.
Just, I have a quick question, if we, if you pulled the panels out from the west going east, and you, you started your array at around the plateau, six forty, six fifty, Woodruff Road would probably be screened better, I would imagine, to the, to the houses, Marvin, Convoy, Colvin. Does that make any sense, or?
Are you saying?
Say, say, say for instance, you pulled all the panels out from west to east, and you started your array at around the plateau, rather than not on the slope, then you put your fourteen-foot screening.
So you're saying take the panels out in the middle here, which is?
No, 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 take everything from west to east, start your array right around where the plateau is. Traveling east, does that make sense? I, I'm just looking at ideas to screen it better to Woodruff Road for the houses that are right there on Woodruff Road.
So you're saying go west to east, so you start here, start going east this way, and then stop at certain point, is that what you're saying?
I don't see, are you doing something on your computer, or?
Yeah, so you can see my cursor?
I don't. I don't see your cursor.
Oh, okay.
I don't see anything moving, no.
Okay, I don't know.
But he said, oh, I, I think I see a white spot now. Like where the.
Yeah, I don't know why you can't.
Do you want me to put the?
Go ahead, go ahead, I'll stop the.
Put the other revised map up. The newly revised map.
Can you guys see that?
Not yet. You have to share me your screen, Dave.
Trying. All this technology, right?
I think Shelly probably allowed you to.
Oh, sure, sure, I have to hit share, I get it.
Yes.
How's that?
There you go.
That's, that's the, this is the updated plan. So if you, if you pulled all the, if you pulled all the panels like up to that, that parking, that parking area, that driveway area, like right there, so if you wiped out all the panels to the left of that, would that be easier to screen? It's all at one, it's, it's not on the slope.
The left of that, you're saying, so?
Everything, everything, everything to the left of that.
This make basically.
Chop, chop that right off, so it's up on the plateau, then you screen it, and this is just, I'm just looking at the map here, and.
So you're, you're saying that you would take a big, a big bite of it out of here?
I would take it from the road back, just a rectangular chunk.
Well, the, the, I'm following the contours here, so you'll be able to screen everything, everything from here down. So you're saying you would take a chunk out of this array right here?
And I, I would make it more straight across, go to the road, go to number six road, and just take a whole rectangular section out, exactly, there you go, just like that. And that's up on the plateau, and then put your fourteen-foot plantings in front of that.
Basically, you're saying do, basically, you're saying do what we just did, but come further.
Exactly, do exactly what you just did, but come further.
As you, it, it goes without saying, you're coming from a low point to the highest point, which is that a pipeline running through the middle, so as you, as you take more panels off and start coming further east, obviously, your screening is going to be higher and higher and higher, but at some point of time, there'd be nothing left in the park, you know? Basically, what you're saying.
No, guy, it looks like you'll still have a pretty substantial amount of panels, I'm not sure how many, how much, but.
The, the only, the only, the only comment I have, guys, is I, I took photos about a year ago, I was out here on this Woodruff Road looking to the east, and I was there, I believe, in the fall under leaf-off conditions, and I couldn't really get much of a view through here, so are we assuming there's no trees at all here? Because we're showing a tree line, if you follow this pen right here.
Dave.
Everything to the west.
Very open.
Tree.
Yes, it's, it's pretty, pretty open, it's not.
Not in here, though, right? Not in, not in this section here, correct?
Yeah, Dave, can I interject, there's been, I think, since Joe is not available and you just were filling in for him, there's been substantial discussion about what you're talking about, including a site visit, and we all met.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's more up-to-date information, so.
But does the screening get, does the screening get thicker as we go north through here, though? That's the only question I have.
Of course, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It does.
Yeah, and we've also heard from some of the neighbors about the amount of ash, dead ash trees in that area of wooded area that basically will be coming down in the next few years, either by nature or by man.
Sure. Okay, understood.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you go further east and take the panels out, then remember that's, that has to be twenty acres. It's, it's that twenty-two right now, so if you take those out, then you'll violate the code because it won't meet the twenty-acre limit.
Yeah, that, that array has been reduced from twenty-seven to about, we're about twenty-two point seven right now. You have two arrays there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was forty-seven acres, it wasn't.
Right, so if you take out fire, if you, if you do what he's suggesting, I still think it'll create the same issue, but you're just moving further east and planting higher and higher screening, but that area will get cut down to less than twenty acres, then it won't meet code.
What do you mean it won't meet code? You got, you got, before you had forty-seven acres, you're taking.
No, no, Dave, Dave, these are two separate.
Well, can't you combine them into one?
Combine them into one?
Yeah, each one has to meet twenty acres.
Or you could, why can't you combine them into one?
I mean.
We can, then we'll violate other rules related to the utility. That's the problem, we would love to and actually take some of those out, but then we'd violate other utility rules, so.
Because it'd be over five megawatt per, per system.
You're right, ah, no, no, it can be five or less, but if you go below twenty acres, oh, why don't you make it just one project, you said?
Yes.
Yeah, one project. Always, we could always do that, but that's, that's like us coming and as, saying we have plans to build a building a hundred thousand square feet, and you cut it down to fifty, there are other, yeah, other project-related reasons that. Sure, I mean, that's always an option, I understand, but again, my, my, my point is that hundred percent screening. Again, my, my, my point is that hundred percent screening in any instance cannot be achieved, even if we. Made this just one project. I mean, as.
And I think we understand that, I think that's generally understood, we're just looking for some compromise.
Especially towards Woodruff Road, I mean.
Yeah.
This, and like I said, I applaud you because you've brought it up, this, that slide, so that, the side slope that. You know, you're never going to cover and, you know, I have a concern of people walking out their backyard and, and viewing um, a solar array every time they walk out. And that's their, where they live and that's their life. Um, so, you know, you've made this much better, but there's still going to be. Um, I was just looking at, at how we could do this to get the maximum um, screening so that it wasn't um. Objectionable to, you know, people that lived around there, I mean, uh. People didn't really sign up for that.
Oh, I understand, yes. And the only way, only way to do that is remove panels at the highest point, so.
Or what if you just took where this red line is, um, you just took that section out. I mean, that would, that should uh.
Left of it, the red line.
Even if you left some of the panels in the first two rows to, to where they are.
To the south.
Yeah, and just um, you know, if that's, if that south is covered by screening and they can't see it from Woodruff Road. Then I don't know what that, you know, red is almost a circle, but it's, it's kind of like, you know. You've got a rectangle, then a triangle on the bottom, you know, is that doable? How much, how many acres is that, that, you know, is that? That if that um, uh, screen went along that edge, it appears to me that it might be almost a hundred percent screen.
So Don, if I'm getting, if I'm understanding you correctly, that you want to put the screening where that red line, Dave, can you go back to your?
Yeah, I was trying to zoom in.
It'd be the long of the, the new edge of the panels to the west, right?
So along the red line, everything left of the red line is gone, that's what you're saying, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I mean, if you did that, then it would be a hundred, it'd be screened almost a hundred percent to the west, right?
Yeah. I'm mostly concerned about the first four or five houses on Woodruff, definitely.
Right.
One of the ones are going to be impacted the most.
As far as Marvin's, you know, you get, when you go farther north from Marvin's, it gets less of truths, you know, objectionable.
Yeah, this is where the tree line cuts in right at Marvin too, right here.
Yep.
So as you, as you start going north of their property line, you, you get an extra. Four hundred feet of forest, which helps too, this forest actually gets all the way out to here. So, right, this is, this is, this is kind of the critical line.
Yes.
This way.
Hmm.
But that high point is still there, which is on the south in the middle of, kind of southeast, yeah.
And so what's the difference between that red line and this, and that blue line? Uh, height-wise.
Yeah, and you've got fourteen feet to add from there.
Yes.
The difference between those two lines is uh.
Well, this is six fifty all the way up here. The blue line is at six, six, six forty-six.
It looks like right where that building or that turnaround driveway is, it's like six twenty-three, four-ish. If I follow it, yeah. Yeah, if you follow it over six twenty-five maybe, or is it a little bit more?
Six twenty-eight, six twenty-eight, six thirty.
So that blue line is.
We could round up to six thirty if we follow this red line.
That blue line's like around six fifty-ish, six forty-eight.
So six thirty.
I, I'm just.
What's the blue line, Dave? The blue line you have on, you drew already?
That's where we thought we would have instant screening originally, up to, up to six, six forty-ish. If we took six thirty and added fourteen feet. Not including the height of the panels. So we thought that this was in, originally, this would be the primarily viewable, viewable. Or potentially viewable area right here. And these trees would screen in between. But again, as you push up, obviously your screening helps. Or your elevations help, and then you add your screening and the, the further, the further everything pushes east toward the blue line. At some point, if you came all the way up to the blue line at six forty-five. Or six forty-six plus the fourteen, you'd be up to six sixty, so you would screen the entire site.
That's, that's what I was thinking, if you started the array upper, on that upper higher side of the.
But, but that really is, that really only leaves this little piece of it left. So.
And they've got roughly two point seven acres to take out, to meet the code. Um. Cause they have, they reported twenty-two point seven for farm two on the new plan. So, yeah.
Okay, well, um.
So, like I said, just to bring in a somewhat of an understanding. So you're saying if we, if we took the array along that red line, cut it back along that red line and screened it. That might. That's acceptable?
I would not accept that. You've got to be way up on the plateau, I think. Down to a much smaller area, because you're always going to be able to see it from the northwest. With, with the screening down at six.
I understand, which goes back to the original point, which is you can never screen this hundred percent.
Yeah, but I, how about ninety-five percent from the northwest? And I mean, we're already conceding, you, you're going to see it from uh, West Henrietta Road, Route fifteen over the bridge.
Three ninety, West Henrietta Road.
Yeah, um. While we're on the subject, just one minor detail at the very southeast, behind those two properties on the corner. The screen needs to be continued all the way down to the corner, because those lots will have a view right in there.
Sure. We'll do that.
It's totally unscreened there.
Yeah, we'll do that. That's fine, we can do that, that, that's not a problem.
And that area along the east side where you show poplar trees. Is that, are the poplar trees the reason you didn't continue the screening there?
Yes. Yeah, this uh.
The poplar trees lose their leaves six months of the year here. Yeah, I think that there's a somewhat of an existing hedge line there, hedge row with, with the trees. And take a look at that to see if it's.
Yeah, I guess we could come, we could add more trees there and complete the whole row.
I would.
Yeah, that's fine, um. I'm not sure by taking panels out, how we would even meet the limits we are looking to, so. Um. Uh, basically, I.
I guess what are you willing to do? I mean, um, if you can tell us what, what is, um, if you can't do it, then. You, you have to let us know what, what's acceptable, and then we have to go on upon what you tell us. I mean, if it makes it so it's not profitable for you to do it, um, and we can't. Screen it as well as, as we think it should be from Woodruff Road especially, um, you know. I guess we have to come to a conclusion of what, what can be done.
Sure, so uh. What can be done?
We, we understand that can't be a hundred percent um, screened, but um, you know, what, what's the best you can do?
Well, I was just thinking, there's one way to meet the twenty acre limit, which is we could just put the fence wherever we want, just don't put panel. So that would eliminate the twenty acre limit problem, right?
So where are you going to put your um, screening on the inside of the fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Or I don't know how the twenty acre limit is defined, is it defined as something inside the fence? I have to go back and look at the code, but I think that's how it's defined, I believe.
Okay.
I believe that's right.
Well, I guess I have a question for you, Shandra, or even the rest of the board, as I'm looking at this map. Of course, that would require a variance, but what if you moved the entire project as far to the east as possible, up against the three ninety fence?
That's, that was a suggestion I made earlier, but I guess you'd have to go to in front of zoning, right, and get a variance.
Right, right.
That, that would make, that would, that would help you move the whole project closer to the, to uh, to that east boundary.
Move both farms closer to three ninety and take off. From the west on the western side, that would get it up closer to the top of the plateau.
That might put you right there.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that as, I mean, we could take out panels here and put them there. I, I don't know how long that process is and, of course, it can be done, but what if they don't give us the variance this? Um, maybe.
Well, yeah, you, you, right, you, you're not sure if you're going to get the variance, but you're also not sure how. The town board is the lead agency here and what we're, what we're working on tonight is uh. Is the basically suggestions to see how this fits with the town code and, and, and the town board is looking for our. Again, our input on this, uh, looking over the plan and. You know, we're, we're. We're trying, I think we're trying here.
Yeah, we're trying to look for the compromise and, and hopefully for the best uh, situation. Um, if you, if the town board under, with our recommendations approved it. Um, you know, it's going to have to have a variance no matter what, so would the town board be more apt to give you a variance to be close to the uh. You know, property line of Route three ninety, or are they going to give you a variance for um, not being a hundred percent um, screened? Or for neither, I don't know, but uh.
You, you means, you mean zoning board, right?
Well, I'd go through the zoning board, but I think that the town board is going to look at this and they're going to make a determination whether, you know. Whether they're going to allow that to happen, I mean, because they're the lead agency.
Well, there's multiple steps and certainly John Mancuso can tell us the details, but. At this point, all we do is make a, a report and a resolution.
Right.
Which could be positive or negative, right?
Um, right.
But then the town board has to make the overlay district and then it still comes back to us for a site plan and special permit. So it could, could get town board approval and still not get our approval of special permit. If it doesn't meet the code.
Right. Right, that's correct, Scott.
This is just a, I mean, it's a different situation than, than the other forefront, because forefront. The land shape is like a bowl and this is just the opposite, this raises up. From high, from low to high, from the south to the north, or from the north to the south, so it's very hard to screen and um. I don't want to spend our whole night on this, um. I think that we need to go back to our checklist and uh, and start reviewing that, unless uh, Shandra, you have got something more that. Um, that you can conclude or, or tell us, um, I don't want to belabor this.
This is Scott again, and here's my question, uh, this is obviously a change from the checklist we started. For the project that was in place when we started going through the checklist.
Right.
So is, is this a new project that gets referred to us once again from the town board? I mean, it's not clear to me that what, what we would be going through a checklist on here.
You'd almost have to start from scratch again and be in a new project.
Well, so we're at this point, um. The town board is the lead agency and the project has gone, undergone probably three or four different uh, iterations over the last couple of years. Um, ultimately. There is no decision that's been made by any board with respect to this, um, currently in the process. The referral has been made and as part of the referral, this applicant has voluntarily decided to try to make modifications that would. Um, in my estimation, um, are designed to try to alleviate some of the concerns that the planning board has been looking at in their checklist. You know, trying to obtain a more positive uh, overall review of each of those sub-criteria. And we're obviously stuck on screening, which is, you know, obviously, you know, a big, a big part of the overall law. Um, you know, I think the planning board. Don, you had a couple of things that you had mentioned, I think if you combine that with what Scott said, I think you need to decide whether or not you feel like. This is a, if you've reached a point where, you know, this is the plan. This is what they're proposing and they'd like you to make a decision on this current iteration and that may mean. Um, your conclusions are, we don't think it can be screened and so town board, you need to understand that we don't think it can be completely screened in its current. Configuration, you're going to have to deal with that in your process and we may very well deal with that when it comes back to us, if it comes back to us. Um, you may also conclude that you feel like other modifications may be warranted, you know, to your point, Don moving, uh, and, and, and Rick. Um. Considering putting those panels closer to three ninety, recognizing, yes, it may need a variance, but to your point, Don. A variance from a setback because it's against three ninety, weighing that against a variance for uh, screening. Because you can't achieve complete screening, so which, you know, if you're going to need a variance. That's not this board's charge, but it very well is a consideration for a seeker. Review by the town board and it, and, and obviously the zoning board of appeals, deciding whether, you know, one variance would be more palatable than another. Um, you know, so you certainly can, I think there's enough information before you now to start going. To finish the checklist, but to Scott's point, you may want to circle back through the first part of the checklist. And I don't think you need to go, you know, uh, spend three more hours going through what you already went through, but to just see if anything does change with some of those questions. I think a lot of them, Scott, probably don't change. Um, uh, but some, some questions may warrant some follow-up, uh, some follow-up thoughts, you may want to rerun. Run back through it either when you're finished with this, or, you know, if you want to go back through it now, I'll leave that to you, you know, what order you want to go in.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, um, I think it makes it more clear to everybody, um. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, um, I think that. Although it makes it better, I don't think the same, I think we're going to go to the same conclusions, I would. And uh, hear me out and the rest of you can, can chime in what you want to do, I think that we probably should start where we left off, go through the rest. And then. If we want to revisit, but I, I have a feeling that like um, John had said, um. Things might, I don't think there's a lot that's going to change, I think we're going to come to the same assumptions on the first, you know. First points that we went through halfway through here, so um, what does everybody else think? Um, I would uh, start it, I guess we were what, at, at uh, number ten? I would continue and um, go from there, so.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me, Don, I, I would say let's, let's go ahead, it is, it is, it is what it is, um. They came back to us with a revised plan, um, they tried to mitigate the visual of the panels, uh. With this revised plan, but still staying um, economically feasible for them to do the project in their eyes, so. Um, you know, I guess again, it's, we're not approving this project tonight, we're giving our. As Scott said, we're coming up with a resolution of findings and we're giving that back to the town board.
Sounds good, Scott.
Yeah, it's fine, I'm just wondering if we wouldn't be better off having somebody do a draft of the, of the uh. Questions and uh, handle it that way, rather than going through each one, one by one.
A draft of the questions, what do you, um, what do you mean exactly by that?
A draft of the questions and the resolution.
Okay.
It, we went through the first half of that in real time last meeting, right?
Yes.
And so if the board wants to change its protocol, I mean, I'll defer to the board, um, you know, from a consistency standpoint. We may want to just walk through the, the remaining portions of the questions, um, if there are, and then, and then come back, and then. Then we can follow up, I think, and then draft it in writing, then get it back in front of the board a second time and then walk through it more comprehensively. Um, it probably would be useful to walk through those, I know it's, I don't think it's nine fifteen, but.
Yeah.
I would, I would prefer that the board fi, to finish the process it started with this.
I would rather finish what we started so that we're consistent and get through these and then we can revisit. and get through these and then we can revisit this the next time and then draft a, a resolution. Um, uh, Steve or, or Rick?
Yeah, I, I, let's just keep going with it. There's, I think you did the bulk, a heavy bulk of it up to ten.
Okay.
I, I agree. I think we owe the apps kind uh, to continue the processes we started at.
Okay, are, are we going to do the informal discussions later tonight or just do away with those?
Well, we're gonna do them, um, we either, well, I hate to break this off when we're in the middle of this, but um, I don't think the informals would take that long to get through them. Um.
You wanna get the informals out of the way, Don? Is that what you're thinking?
It, it, I don't know if it's proper to do this. We wanna just stall this uh, process and then uh, listen to the informals, get them out of the way and so then they can, then get back to this, cuz I don't, um, you know.
I, I don't have a problem yet and then people, those people can, you know, they can enjoy their night and.
Okay, so I guess that's what we're doing. And then if we can't get through everything tonight, we're gonna revisit this next meeting and hopefully, you know, get through with this checklist and any other concerns. But I'm glad that, you know, that we heard from uh, Helios on these changes with Sandra and, you know, we know, we know where things are even if they do this. So um, having said that, let's go to the um, informals. Uh, Shelley, if we're gonna just hold this uh, you know, come back to this informal on this application. Um, and since informal, we don't have to really, you know, make a um, a formal presentation. So um, we'll go to the informal discussions and the first one, um, if Shelley, if you would introduce um, the first uh, one on of the two.
Okay, we have, where do I want to go? So the first one we have is David Peisher, Peisher of twenty-four eighty-six Pinnacle Road, Rush, New York. Proposed expansion of building or adding a second building. I do not see him in the meeting.
Shelley, was somebody on the phone? That's not, is that?
I don't know who's on the telephone.
Okay.
Someone on the phone?
Yeah, I see somebody with a, with a last two, their last three numbers are one, six, five.
Right, but I don't know if that's Eve or not.
Hi, sorry, no, it's Pat Kraus. I'm just listening. Hi, I'll go back on. Thank you, Shelley.
Okay, so, a- and I didn't hear back from him when I um, sent him the link and asked him for more information, so I don't know what's going on, but I don't see him here.
Okay, well, if he hasn't uh, made himself clear that he's here by now, I would think that he's uh, he's probably not here. So um, the next one.
The next one is Bob Gage of six zero seven five East Tenrietta Road, Rush, New York. Proposed shared workspace of the building that is known as Rush Trading Company. And I don't, I don't see him either and he said he was going to be here.
Makes it easy.
Well, I talked to him uh, over the phone and basically he owns a box store, um, which, you know, I, I guess has been called the Trading Post. Um, I basically asked him what he was proposing and what he was doing and really he's not doing anything that, that hasn't been there currently, but I wanted to bring this to the board because um, there's a, just a couple of things that I'm concerned about and I don't want to vet things myself. There's five members here. We all have um, a, a voice, we all have a vote and um, even informally, um, there's somebody that might think of something that I haven't thought of, that it might be a concern to both to him and the community. So um, basically, I didn't realize it, but that store was in, was in really horrendous shape. Um, the front facade, uh, two stories, which is um, uh, tin clad or metal clad, um, was being held um, in place, so it didn't fall into the road by two come-alongs that were um, tightened up, holding the front facade from falling into the road. Um, they um, have, they bought the building, they have repaired that, so the front will not fall in the road now. And um, the roof leaked, uh, there was two upstairs apartments, one, one bedroom, the other one was two bedroom. They basically hauled out like four or five uh, roll-off worth of um, garbage and uh, water stained, water soaked um, from, they got a new roof on it, so that's not gonna happen. I guess the front is gonna fall in. Basically what he's looking is to replace the two uh, apartments upstairs to be the same as they were, um, but he's gotta go and basically do everything new. Um, the downstairs, which was the store, um, is currently made into like an office space and um, he's basically looking at updating the um, office space, not really changing what it is now, but it would be an office space for something like um, um, like an insurance company or something on those lines. Um, nothing that was really in-depth where they were, had a kitchen space of anything more than, you know, uh, you know, for coffee or something. Uh, I guess the other thing was, but my major concern, I don't know what else, anybody else had, but um, there's not a lot of land on that parcel. The septic system is behind the building and that's also where the parking spot is and I think that there's maybe uh, parking space for maybe four or five cars, um, maybe six. Um, those were the concerns that I had that, you know, I asked him to informally come in front of the board. Um, I thought he was gonna be here and uh, you know, apparently maybe he forgot about it or something, but I guess in a nutshell, that's um, that's what it is, but I guess the um, good part about it was that there, him and his brother are looking to restore uh, the building so that it looks like it did a hundred years ago. And so um, the upstairs huge windows, um, they have ordered that are gonna be vinyl clad, but they're gonna look just like the original windows that were there and there were windows on the both the north and south side of the building that were um, basically covered over and they were gonna replace those windows to what it looked like. And I know both sides look at other buildings, but um, um, they're looking at, you know, putting siding on that would match on both sides that I, I, I think was gonna be vinyl siding, but um, it's gonna be, look a lot better than what it does now. So um, you know, I guess that's, that's what I know. And um, it's too bad they didn't come in front of us, but it didn't sound to me like he was gonna be doing anything that he'd have to get um, a special use permit or, or go above what he's, well, what's already been approved there. Um, but my concerns, like I said, were um, septic and parking. And uh, I wanted the rest of board to hear this, um, it to hear what his presentation was because the rest of you might think or, or have ideas that I, I've missed. So um, having said that, we'll go back to our checklist.
Um, can I stop there for a minute?
Sure.
Um, that, that is commercial property or in the commercial district?
Yes.
Does, so.
Yes, it is.
So when you mentioned that earlier, I started looking at the commercial district and it's retail personal businesses. And then there is a special permit process for other uses, but you did mention there was apartments in there and our part, our apartments allowed in the commercial district. I'm not seeing it, but am I missing something? John Mancoosel or Todd, you are my missing something in our code?
Um, I don't believe they're permitted unless it was a pre-existing non-conforming and that residential mixed use was there before it was rezoned. I'm not, I'm not sure. That's something that's probably a John Limbeck question to check when that, you know, when that was approved.
That's what I was gonna say. Have John look into that and get back to the board, especially if the applicant isn't here to speak to it.
Right.
Alright, I guess I'll, I'll take the lead on that. I'll talk to John um, and find out. They, they, I guess they've got apartments, they've got apartments as long as I've lived in town for forty four, or forty years. Um, and then the store down below, so that would be a, a pre-existing use.
I've seen over the years uh, that that area, that, that the commercial properties in the town of Rush were rezoned and a lot of them became non-conforming because they had mixed uses associated with them. It wouldn't be the first time, but I think John Limbeck would definitely be able to help answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, this is Scott. I, I looked at the code as well and I, it's really risky bringing this before the planning board because if a site plan is required for that new office, I mean, office and office buildings are allowed. Uh, but there are things like side and rear setbacks of seventy-five feet to residential, so I don't know if there's residential right behind it. Uh, to which requires twenty feet of a screen buffer. I'm pretty sure that, that wouldn't exist. Um, there's this, you know, we need to, we need to consider things like ingress and egress of vehicles and pedestrians, off-street parking. There are requirements about how much parking is required relative to the number of customers, that sort of thing. Uh, so it's.
Yeah, I, I read all that too, Scott, and that's why, that's why I wanted to hear from, from Mr. Gage himself about, you know, how, how many, how many people are gonna be using the building and, and there, there's, we, we need more information to hear directly from him, I guess, at a, at a informal. So I guess Don will just, we'll have to get back to him and tell him, he, nothing's gonna happen until he comes in front of us.
I was just saying, that's why I was hoping that he'd be here so he could tell us exactly what his plans were, so we would know these things. And I, and I, again, I guess that we have to talk to um, you know, Mr. Leeback to see uh, if you have a pre-existing of some of the things that Scott said, if it's already like that uh, and it's already been, uh, the downstairs has been office space to a degree, how much can you you know, legally make them change? I mean, uh, if he's got uh, insurance agency and there's four cars parked there and that's, that's within, you know, uh, I guess that we need to hear from him.
And I, I guess I was gonna say, maybe Scott and I can take the lead on this project, but uh, there's no sense of doing anything until we hear from him. We need to know the specifics. So let's just get back with Mr. Gage and get him to uh, get him to a meeting.
Yeah, I thought. I thought that was gonna be the case tonight.
He'll need to show us the whole lot too, not, not just the inside of the building.
Yep.
Well, yeah, he has to, he has to know the, the dimensions of what he has for a lot and how the building sits on it. Uh, but I guess we gotta get him here, you know. So, alright, so let's go back, let's get something done here. Um, get back onto um, the checklist for the solar overlay district. So um, Scott, when we were on um, I, number ten, um, had we finished that? You were um,
Well, I, I think we, we've certainly talked a lot about it and we have a general understanding of what the issues are.
Yeah.
We are a long way from drafting any kind of statement about it that we would all agree to.
Well, I don't know if we all have to agree.
Okay.
I mean, um,
I mean, at this point, I would have to answer that no.
Yeah, because I, I don't think that we're all gonna agree on it. I think we all agree that it's an issue. Um, but I don't know, I mean, it, it might be that we can't agree on some of these things. We're still gonna, we're gonna have to send something to the town board and, and kinda like outline that we're not, maybe not all in a hundred percent agreement. Um, but let's move on then, um, get through these, uh, rest these points and then at the next meeting, we can um, get together and hopefully, you know, draft something that um, you know, points our views and then send it to the town board so they can start, you know, keep moving on this. So um,
Don, I guess I'll take a vote on, take a vote on ten and then move on to where we finished off.
If we think that we reasonably went through it, I would agree if um, if we're all in agreement that um, um, that we're um, all set, that we, the agreement that we've covered, um, point number ten, um, could we have a vote? That we're finished with that and we'll move on to the next.
I guess.
Member McPherson?
Okay, we're just, we're just coding on whether we're ready to move on.
Yeah, that we, that we have uh, considered uh, point number ten and that we're, we're done with it. We're gonna move on to eleven then. So if uh, Shelley would poll the board.
Member McPherson? Member Werzer?
Yeah.
Member Strack?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, having done that, we'll go on to um, checklist number eleven. Which reads the removal of trees, uh, be minimum. Number eleven, the removal of trees be minimized or offset by plantings elsewhere on the property. Is that right? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the right question.
Okay. Discussion?
Uh, for those that visited the property, is there not a small um, existing hedgerow that would be removed?
Yeah, there's a, there's a east-west hedgerow that they're gonna take right out. Well, actually with the new revised plan, some of it might still exist, so.
Might still be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the other, the other part is the, what apparently goes as a foundation for the house.
Correct, right, yeah.
Local trees there that will be removed.
That'll be gone, right?
I, I looked at it this way, that the uh, the application stated no trees would be removed, thinking that those things had already been removed. Fact is, trees will be removed, but it's not a big deal in my, my point of view.
Right.
If I was farming that land, I'd wanna remove the trees anyway.
Yeah, it's a pretty scrubby spot anyway, so.
I was gonna say, I thought that they had been removed also till I went to the site and realized they hadn't and I, I agree, I would have removed them. Um.
So, so I'm thinking the question is asking, will the removal of, will, will removal of trees be minimized or offset by planting elsewhere? Well, I guess you could say that the screening will offset what's being removed easily.
Okay. Any other?
No, so you won't.
Okay, so let's go down to the next one, or do we have to vote on each one of these? I don't think.
Do we, did we poll the board? I, I can't recall last meeting, were we polling the board through each question?
You did poll the board for each question, yes, John.
So I would just, let's, let's do that quickly. Um, I believe if, if I'm hearing consensus, I think the answer is yes to that question. Based on what the discussion was.
Yes.
So.
So Shelley, can you poll the board on that?
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, so there's uh, H eleven, there's two other parts. Um, and I'll read them together and uh, we can quickly decide on these. Okay, so um, is there a vegetation management plan which includes planting or protection of pollinators uh, and perennial vegetation question? Um, and also uh, the second part of that was, will clearing, cutting of trees be minimized? Well, that's all part of what we um, had discussed and the first one we just voted on. Um, I would say those all fit into the last one if everybody agrees with me.
Yes, yeah.
Fine, yes.
I agree. So my vote would be the same.
Yeah, so I don't know, I don't, I don't think we need to vote on that if it's part of the other um, statement. Uh, agreement with that or what?
I agree.
I agree.
Alright, so H twelve, will roadways within the um, site be uh, designed and concentrated to minimize the extent of driveways, uh, soil compaction and uh, or not use uh, impervious materials? So in other words, you know, if you put a driveway in there, is it gonna be able to absorb water and not have it run off and absorb through the, through the soils and so um, looking at that plan, does anybody wanna comment on, um, I mean, there's a driveway that goes and then it curves and then stops and um.
Well, bas- basically, uh, Don, uh, it shows that the uh, construction of the driveway is gonna be uh, filter fabric uh, on top of the soil and then uh, stone on top of that. So uh, that's all impervious uh, or, or previous. Um, so the only impervious it says would be the electrical equipment pads, uh, which would be concrete where the uh, where the interconnects are.
So if we're all in agreement that that is the case and it wouldn't be um, it would be minimized, um, So if we're all in agreement that that is the case and it wouldn't be, um, it would be minimized, um. Any discussion before I have, uh, Shelley pull us?
No.
No.
Okay, so Shelley, if you'd please pull the board for, um, a vote.
Member McPherson? Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack? Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, having that done, uh, we'll go to, uh. What is it, thirteen here? So all the, uh, onsite utility and transmission lines be, uh, to the extent feasible placed underground. Um. Any comments on that? I mean, they, they really aren't, right?
Some is underground, some was overhead, I believe.
Yeah, overhead at the road.
Underground to, yeah, right, so it's.
I think it'd be, I think there's a pole at the, at the road and then it is buried in into interior of the site.
After it goes in the site, right?
Yeah, hi, this, this is Dave, if I could jump in.
Yep.
Uh, everything that can be buried onsite is buried onsite and underground. The only overhead is the interconnects at the, at the high, at the street.
And they come together, they come together as one, right, as I remember on this?
Yeah, which is a requirement of National Grid.
Okay.
So, so I would say yes.
So in your, in your statement of findings here, Dave, it's, it says, uh. As shown in the site plan and as required by utility for interconnection, utility poles. Are proposed within the front two hundred feet of the project site. Off of Honey Island Falls number six where along the interior access road. So you'll have utility poles from two hundred feet in. Uh, into the project and then then underground from there. Is that correct?
Sorry, I was on mute, mute, correct.
Any other discussion by other board members? Having, not, haven't heard none, um, Shelley, would you pull the board?
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner? Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, having taken care of that, we'll go to fourteen. Says, will the solar panels have, uh, anti-reflective coatings to reduce glare? To the maximum extent is practical. And so, uh.
As I can see, they say yes.
That's what it appears to me. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I think Todd had a comment on that, uh, in in his, some of his comments. Uh, and and when I looked at the write-up, it looks like it's been addressed, but frankly, I don't understand it. And I think Todd came to the same conclusion that he didn't quite understand.
Yeah, I reviewed their, um, their glare study and either Dave or Chandra could speak to it, but I did have initial comment. But they did say they had any glare on their panels. Um.
I guess what it's.
Yeah, that's a question for the applicant. I mean.
Yeah, the, the, all of the modern day panels now do have an anti-glare coating on them. And I believe Chandra attached the, uh, spec sheet on the panels somewhere in that package. See if I can find it.
Attachment, attachment eight. Has a glare analysis.
And that's, that's what none of us could understand.
Uh, basi- basically what that shows, basically what that shows you is. They have what they call green glare, yellow gr- glare. Uh, there's zero, it it basically results in zero glare. So the analysis showed that there is no glare effects from the proposed arrays. And that's done with that Forge software program, which is a standard for the industry. The panels themselves are also coated with an anti-glare, uh, material.
Okay.
That's standard. The idea is you wanna absorb energy. You don't want, you don't wanna reflect it. You wanna absorb.
That gets to my question and th- these are tracking panels, right? They will actually move with the sun. So it seems to me that to the extent that you're able to keep them pointed at the sun, any, any reflection will be directly back at the sun, which nobody really cares about. Um, is that true? The tracking panels will have less probable glare than non-tracking panels, which you could be at the wrong angle then, see?
Yes. Yes, that's correct. And typically, we see glare a lot of times will be at early morning hours on the fixed panels or at at evenings. That's when you typically would see the glare. When the sun is at a very steep angle. But the good news is this analysis resulted in zero glare.
Okay. Well, if the, the Ford agrees with me that this is, if this is true, then it's not a issue. Um. We wanna vote, and I'll have Shelley Paul pull the board.
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Having done that, there's, uh, fifteen has two parts, so I'll read them both. Okay, uh. Part one is, will signage be limited to no more than eight square feet and be included only in the manufacturer's name? Uh, equipment specifications and safety information, uh, and twenty-four hour emergency, uh, contact information. Um, that's the first part. The second part will, um, of H fifteen is. Will disconnect and emergency shut-off information be clearly displayed on reflective, on a light reflective surface? Uh, and clearly visible warning sign concerning voltage be placed at the base of all. Had mounted transformers and substations. So, um, Chandra, do you want to, um. Tell us what exactly, um, refresh our memory, what, what you have in place here?
Uh, H fifteen, right?
Yes.
Uh, our answer was no signage or graphic content. Will be displayed on the solar energy systems except the manufacturer's name. Equipment specification information, safety information and twenty-four hour emergency contact information. And said information will be depicted within an area no more than eight square, uh, feet. Signage details are included with the project site plans. Um. Attachment C. So I think the site plan that we had provided in the past. Uh, not the one we provide, we only provided one sheet, the site plan has, I believe. Uh, more than, uh, one sheet, it has six sheets and it's in the, I'll tell you which page it is.
Yeah, we have a detail, a detailed sheet and there's, there's really no signage other than the required signage by code. And contact information. We do have a sign that in case of emergency has a contact name and telephone number. So that's it for the signage.
Yeah, there's no other sign.
Okay. Okay, having heard that, if the board all agrees, I'll have Shelley pull us, uh, for a vote.
Member McPherson? Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner? Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, we'll move on to H sixteen and, um. That appears to be just one part. Of the rest, okay, so, um. This reads, will lighting be limited to the minimal required for safety and in compliance with. Chapter one twenty, article, uh, five or six of, of outdoor lighting in the town zoning law. And look at the, uh. Here.
I think the answer is that no lighting is proposed.
I was gonna say, I didn't think there was any lighting on here. Unless I'm missing something, there was something at the gate or.
Uh, there, there's no, there's no lighting required as part of the project.
Right. Okay. So that kind of answers that question and, um, we'll have, I'll have Shelley pull the board for a vote on this.
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner? Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, so, um. The rest of this, uh, and I don't remember this before, but it jumps from sixteen to eighteen. Um. Do you have, I mean, unless somebody has a, a sheet that I don't have that has seventeen on it?
I have seventeen, my seventeen says, is there an acceptable decommissioning plan?
Yeah, I don't.
That's what I have.
Yeah, if you wanna read that, because I don't have that on my sheet at all.
It, it's just simple. It says, is there an acceptable decommissioning plan for the proposed site? And then, yes, a decommissioning plan is included and it's attachment six.
Exactly.
Um, Todd had some reservations though around the cost, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I may comment on the, the cost estimate, but I think at this point, that would be vetted. You know, i- if it goes forward, Scott, so they did have a decommissioning plan with the application. But I did question some of their items, um.
If it was enough.
Yeah, if it was enough.
I remember that, um. But if they have a plan and, uh, I guess it's to the town board if they're gonna accept us or when it comes back to us, if it does. Um, we'd have to make sure that that was verified. But currently, if that's, uh, the case that they do have a plan in, in place, um, if we wanna vote on it so that. Um, we basically acknowledge that there is one. Uh, Shelley, would you, uh?
Don, Don, I guess I'll comment on, on this one that, um. As far as the decommission plan, it's, it's all gonna be a moot point. It's the project changes and so. We could go down a rabbit hole, um, kinda like we did with the, with the, uh, screening. On, uh, decommission plan, but until we actually have the footprint of the actual project. From the town board, I guess, then it's up to the town board at that point to review the decommission plan. And that's where Todd can really get into the nitty-gritty with the square footage. And at that point, I think like we brought up before, we'll know more about the. Uh, borings and soil types and what, if concrete's gonna be needed to anchor any posts or anything like that, so. Uh, I, I think it's, it's, it's a little premature. They have something down, I understand, but. As long as the applicant understands that that might change, um, or or very well could change. Uh, going forward, uh, with consideration from the town board.
Well, my understanding that, Chandra, is this right, if you're still there?
I'm there.
That, uh, you hadn't done a boring plan or a, a survey yet?
No, we have done GRPAC.
Okay, so you know, you have an idea what there is for bedrock and, and you, when you, so you. You know, you've gone that far so that you would know and you'd have an idea what would have to be done for adding concrete or drilling or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um. Thanks, Jeff, for the input. If anybody else has anything before I have Shelley, um, pull the board for a vote on seventeen. Then we'll move on to eighteen.
Member McPherson?
Hi, and did we wanna add those comments that we just talked about to that one?
Yeah, I would, um, write those comments when we come back, uh, in June here and, you know, get this together. Um, we want all those comments together to, you know, take onto the board, that's the board. Okay, Shelley?
Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Strack? Deputy Chair Werner?
Hi.
Chairman Sweetie?
Hi. Okay, and so, uh, have moved on that to, um. Number eighteen, which is in one, two, three, four, five, five sections. Uh, we'll go through each section and then vote on it at the end. Um, if, you know, we can get to through all these that we agree. Um, okay, the first one is, um, that I have here is, um, H eighteen. B, so I might be missing, and I don't know how I was, how I ended up missing a sheet, but, um, I'll read this and if there's something. If you guys have something that's before this, let me know. It says, there is a need for the proposed use, um, in the proposed location. Um. You guys have anything before that?
I don't.
Okay.
The first one, yeah.
Nope, that's the right one.
Okay, um, and it says under that, um. The first point is, need will be based on the first paragraph of, um. One twenty dash seventy-four of the solar energy systems, a purpose, the, uh, intent. Uh, is to encourage the use of renewable energy systems. Um, second point is location, is there, um, the systems that are allowed. Um, are in a prohibited. Are allowed and are not prohibited by law. Um, third point is, uh, item two, need, um, and item three, intent. Um, are. Basically the same, um. Since the intent is, uh, of the law is to, uh, encourage the use of solar systems, um, in the town. And the project is meeting the need of, um, the law if is allowable and based, yeah, on. The other requirements of the law. Yeah, so does anybody have anything to?
I think that's essentially the way we answered the Helios one or the Werner one.
Okay.
That's, that is correct, Scott.
Okay, so, uh, any other comment?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Second, uh, eighteen B, um, effect of the existing charac-. Oh, effect on the existing character of the neighborhood in which, uh, the use will be located. Um, point one, will the project be, will the proposed project be, oh, a project located, not. Have a negative effect on the character of the neighborhood and, um, not impair. The use of, or the use of adjacent properties. So that's kind of. Um, who wants to state comments about that?
Well, this is totally wrapped up in item ten.
Yes.
I think whoever we answer ten is the same way this one gets answered.
Right. Item ten, yeah, um. It is basically, you know, not able to be screened. So, um, the next one is, um, eighteen B, um. The safeguards provided by the minimum possible detrimental effects of the proposed. Use on adjacent properties. So what safeguards include setback, screening, fencing. Uh, anti-glare panels, fire department, um, inspections, et cetera. Um, and I think that the previous, um, points that, you know, we're, that we're gonna answer. Um, and you have, uh, comments for the next meeting, uh, kind of will summarize this, I would think. Um. Five, eighteen B five, it says, does the proposed, propose to meet the intent and objectives of this section? Um, if it meets the zoning and the planning board requirements, then, um, it should meet the intent. Um, also stated above, the planning board needs to review whether the project complies with section one twenty dash seventy-four. Um, eight period purpose in the paragraph, second and third sentences. Um, six, uh, is a proposed conceptual, um, sound and. Conforms with the accepted design principles for the town engineers evaluation and recommended. Any comments on any of those?
No, so Don, how are you proposing? Are, are we actually voting on these or these are, these, these? Is where we'll supply comments back, um, build the resolution and then vote on the resolution.
I was gonna say, that's what we've gotta do because, um. I was gonna say, that's what we've got to do because, um, I think that when we come in June, back to finish this, um, workshop, that we need to have these filled out in either all agree or, uh, maybe have different, um, thoughts on this, but, you know, I, we can't vote on this right now because unless we state out what we're, you know, what we agree, or, you know, what we, what our recommendation is. So I would think that, um, I guess that includes, is a, pretty much, uh.
I guess, I guess, Don, can I, can I ask then John Mancuso, Attorney Mancuso, how, how should we proceed with H eighteen with the five parts?
Yeah.
There's, there's gonna be multiple comments from each of us about, uh, similar, about H ten and then how H ten relates to, you know, uh, especially three, four and five. And how do we summarize all this to get this put together in a concise, readable, um, platform that the town board will understand?
So I think we should probably follow the framework of the prior, we have a resolution, we used for forefront, it's an, it's, it's essentially in sum and substance, tracking this, the, uh, the checklist, or I should say the checklist probably tracks the resolution, um, that was done, that's how it was, that's how it was, this was created. We can work on doing something similar by way of a draft resolution, it sounds to me like the board has reached consensus on all of the questions with the exception of those that interact with the overall landscaping and how that interacts with the buffering and protection of the surrounding areas, that's the area that if it's related to item ten and it also then spills into these other subsections, that seems to be the point where the board wants to, um, elaborate further in terms of its concerns. Um, so I think what we probably would want to do is, uh, now that we have, for the most part, a fairly good outline done, you've gone through all the questions, we can prepare a draft resolution, I think we should work on creating those comments to identify what each member of the board is, has raised in terms of the, you know, considerations of landscaping, the fact that the plan has been revised to attempt to mitigate that issue, but that the board, I mean, I don't want to put words in the board's mouth, but that the board believes there are areas, uh, within the project that still may not be capable of being screened. And the considerations it wants the board, the town board to then consider about that, whether that's, you know, further modifications, relocations, removal of channels, additional landscaping, potential variances. And then, I guess, reaching a, reaching a ultimate conclusion, which is, do you, uh, recommend the creation of the district, would you recommend, uh, the approval with conditions, you know, for example, some of the things you've been discussing, you know, the conditions could very well be, further changes may be necessary and then we would recommend that be created, or, um, not recommending it.
So what if, um, what if a half of us don't want to recommend it and half of us want to recommend it with major changes?
You're an odd number.
It's gonna be hard to, three, three, three out of five is gonna carry the day on the overall recommendation, but I would be mindful of the fact that if there are comments from a member of the board, again, this isn't, this is a recommendation, this is not approval of the overlay district or disapproval of the district, so, uh, any comments, uh, that you as a board believer remain, um, you know, whether it's one individual, two individuals or five individuals, if you think it's worthy of being explained to the town board, then I have no objection of you doing that and memorializing it. Because ultimately, we are, we are still at the early eight, uh, steps of a, of a very comprehensive process, so this project could undergo additional changes, more engineering could be undertaken and things that you have flagged now may very well be addressed in the seeker process or as this, as the engineering of the project, uh, um, unfolds. You know, so you're, you're, you're issue spotting.
Well, I would say, um, yeah, so there's, there's five of us, but if all five of us aren't at the next meeting, we've got, there has to be, I'm just thinking ahead.
Yeah.
So, um, if you had four people here, uh, you know, obviously there's gotta be, yeah, so.
If there's only four people the next meeting and it's a two-two, that's not gonna carry.
Right. I just.
You need a three, you need a three-one.
Yeah, okay.
I, I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see each of us have a voice in this and, um, we, we can vote unanimous, of course, on sending it to the, to the, forward to the town board, but at the same time, I think each of us have a few different feelings of, of possible changes or amendments to the parcel going forward and, you know, if, if on some of these questions, there's five different opinions, let's just state the five opinions and, um, send it on to the town board and then the town board can review it and go from there and maybe they'll find a, a common ground in us and then move, you know, mo- move on the project however they deem, uh, fit.
Well, I, I think the way it works is we, we will have to take a vote on whether we recommend approval or disapproval of the overlay district, but it's just a recommendation.
Correct.
Right. It would be, so, so I guess, let me go.
Well, Don, I think, I think what Jeff's trying to say, Jeff, I think what Jeff's trying to say is each of you can honestly fill this out so the town board can see your point of view, but at the end of the day, to John Mancuso's point, the board has to take a vote and pass either thumbs up or thumbs down and whether it should move forward. But you can all add your own personal comment so they can read it and, you know, as, as an advisory, you know, you're all part of the board, but.
Right, right.
You're not, or you disagree on some and maybe not on all, maybe only a couple, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree, I guess that's, maybe I didn't word it correctly, but we'll take, we'll take one, uh, one overall vote for, for this entire process and then we will go forward that with comments.
Yep. That sounds reasonable to me, I don't know. Okay, so for the next meeting, um, just so everybody's on, on board and knows what's going on, my busy time of my work year for my self-employed business is, uh, basically the next three meetings, meeting in June, July and August, um, I'm gonna try to be here, um, but I might be late, uh, you know, I'm gonna be here one way or another, but I might not be on time, um, it's the nature of my business, so, um, you know, uh, Jeff is gonna take my place and run the meetings for, um, uh, June, July and August, correct? You know, you're good with that and.
As, as far as my schedule looks right now, that shouldn't be a problem.
And, um, you know, this is, you know, so he'll be running the meeting and I just want the rest of the board to know that this is how this is gonna take place and, um, like I said, I'm gonna try to get here so that I can still vote, but, um, I want to make sure that the meeting runs right and is on time. Having said that, um, what do we have, uh, next month, uh, Shelley, for applications and, uh, I know you.
Yeah, can we finish what we, let's finish Helios and make sure.
Um, I'll, I'll make it. We can offer to write up a draft report based on these seventeen or eighteen questions and, uh, and get it to you folks so that we can use that as the basis for citing what we do the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Cause I frankly have written up ninety-five percent of it already.
Now, Scott, is that following, uh, similar, um, template?
Yeah, very much.
Okay, okay.
So essentially, it's, it's a report based on the seventeen questions or however you number them and, uh, and a draft resolution, which we may or may not agree to.
So, uh, when you propose, you, you propose to have this together, then email it to us at a certain time?
Well, before the meeting.
Okay, so like.
I guess, I, I would, I would also like to, John Mancuso, could you work with Scott on that also? Um, I guess I'd like input from you as attorney to the planning board, um. So it comes to us with changes rather than us adopting something and then you looking it over and saying, no, that wouldn't work. So I guess, could the two of you work together and then forward it to the rest of the board?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that, I mean, if, if I see any legal impediments, I can work with Scott on, on that issue. I think in large part, this is gonna be fairly fact-intensive and really within your discretion to just make the findings you feel are appropriate, but if there's anything I'm missing, anything missing, I'll certainly work with Scott to, to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The main with letting me do this is I tend to be very wordy, so I will work hard to keep it brief.
Thank you.
Not as wordy as the lawyers, Scott.
So, uh, what else, so for Helios, coming back here in June, we're gonna do that process and, you know, get that so we can put together a resolution, um, what else do we have to do in accordance with that in former resolution? That's, uh, am I, you know, missing something, forgetting something, basically we have to get the points together and make a resolution whether, you know, we're gonna accept this and then what points have to be with that, um, that should be outlined.
Yeah, I think Scott's probably got that detail, then if it's anything like the prior one, uh, that will satisfy your obligations.
Okay.
It'll be a standalone di- a resolution and findings and, uh, that will be it, it'll go back to the town board and they'll pick up the seeker process from there.
Sounds good, so Jeff, do you have anything else to add for, uh, Helios?
No, I don't, no.
Okay, good, that's, that's good, then we, any other board members have something that we might have missed that you want to bring up on Helios? If not, um, well.
I have a question, uh, just one question.
Sure.
So even if we go back and make changes such as the ones we talked about today, so it's well-screened from Woodruff, you will still, you're still saying that there is an issue looking at it southward from the north parcel, correct?
That, that's what I'm saying, yes, this is Scott. And I'm not, I'm not convinced what you've done is sufficient from the Marvin property either.
No, I understand that, but even if we went back and did enough to, um, fix that, but there's still an issue from the north side?
Yes.
You're saying?
That's my opinion.
Okay. All right, just, just wondering, you know? Cause even if we went and made changes, it, it, we want them to be fruitful.
Understandable, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think we can all agree as a board, as board members that, that, uh, of course, the Woodruff roadside, it, you know, the Marvin property and the property south of that are probably the, um, the most egregious or the ones that need to really, you know, have the most work at, on them to be, um, screened because I think they're the most, you know, obvious to the landowner that's living next door.
Okay.
Um. So, um, if I, unless somebody else has any questions or comments on that, um, I was gonna, um, have Shelley, uh, go over what is so far proposed, um, for, um, informal and regular applications for June so that we have an idea and I'd also like to, uh, take some of these applications that have come in and make sure that somebody is, you know, that there's two people that are working on them, um, so Shelley, what do we have, um, altogether? You sent us out, um, um, some, uh, applications in the mail here a couple of days ago, um, if you could go, kind of go through them so that, um, everybody's on board of what we have coming up towards us.
So, um, we will most likely see Chris Burrell back because he is seeing the zoning board five days before the planning board meeting in June to obtain his variance. So he will be there, uh, with everything that he's supposed to have. Um, we have Lisa Lindsay with a subdivision, which seems pretty straightforward, she wants to, um, give some land to her neighbor for her horses. Um, there is a Pinnacle Road subdivision, which is, uh, the families with Gerbino and Prock and Bishoping and Bach, I believe. And also the Prock brothers that are building on their Pinnacle Road subdivisions, their site plan for their homes. So those are both coming back, um, and then.
Are they going to the zoning board before they get to us, right?
The subdivision, yes, the subdivision is also another variance that is going to the zoning board. They submitted applications on the same day for both things.
Okay.
Um, then we have, um, I don't know how you say this, Genethan Site Plan. They are, I have to open it up, they're at ninety-five High Tech Drive. They are looking to move, um, remove some bushes that are existing in front of the building so they can expand the parking lot.
And that one, I took a quick look and it wasn't clear on how far they want to expand. There's no dimension.
I had, I had to ask them because they didn't give any description on the front of their application. So, shoot, shoot me an email with any questions you have and I will get information out of them. And then Matthews and Fields, they are. What are they?
Woodruff Road, Woodruff Road site?
Yes.
So that's, now, these are all formals that we're talking about, right, and, um, that's a site plan.
Yeah. They're all formals. And then, uh, we also have, where did this go? All right, I lost it, um, we have an informal, which is Madeline's Way, um.
That's a.
Madeline's Way. Yeah, they're very vague with what they want, so I've asked them to give me as much as they can.
So I think that is a, an approved, uh, building lot, uh, house site and I think they're gonna move the house or change the direction of the driveway and some other things, so that's, yeah, um, they need to come in and tell us what they're doing so that we know.
I think that's a pretty steep slope where that house is, so that, that's gonna require probably a new site plan.
Well, they're try, they're trying to, they've asked me several times if I could just take care of it in the office administratively, so. But I keep telling them no, so.
But Don, it's looking like a pretty good month for you to take off.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and, and so I, I want to make sure that people are working on these, so they can settle it all. So, um, I know that, uh, Scott, you were working on Pinnacle Road with Steve, right?
Okay.
That was what, I mean, I, I've got a good memory, so I remember that, um, so a lot of it, well, you've seen it and it, they're gonna go to the zoning board and so we're gonna see what the zoning board says, but they're coming to us formally, so, um, we should all look at these, but I, you know, we purposely have separated these into twos, so there were two people working on it so that, you know, you guys are gonna in-depthly look at what recommendations or, you know, whether they're following code, um, I think that all these that we've gone through that needed to be, and I'll, uh, you know, Todd, you can tell me, but, um, the ones that needed to go to the zoning board, I think that we have sent them there, Burrell and.
Two of them, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the others, one's a lot line, it, you know, exchange, you know, for five acres, uh, that should be fairly simple. I don't know who wants to take that on, but, um, who was working on Burrell's? I mean, I, I was working on it, um, does anybody else, uh?
Not working on it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We've seen it a lot, so, uh, I think that one, that one's taken care of, um, uh, the high tech, that's fairly simple, right? Todd, it's, um, if they tell us what they need, it's basically, they're enlarging the drive or the driveway and parking lot, so, um.
You and I can work on that.
Yeah, I mean, anything else, I mean, the, um, the site plan, and what is it, Honey Hill or, or whatever that?
Madeline's Way, I guess. One one's way, I guess, you and I can work on that, maybe we'll get a better understanding of what they're looking to do.
Yeah, so I guess that that would pretty much take care of stuff. I just want to make sure that the big ones.
Well, I'm here, I'm here as a resource, so somebody reach out if they need help with something.
Okay, unless, you know, I got a couple here that one person could look at. That one. Well, the somebody should look at the lot line adjustment just to see, we'll all look at those, I think.
I can take a look at that too.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that would take care of it.
We have those and then also done, we're going to have the resolution for the Moore property. And then a resolution for Helios.
Yes.
That looks like a nice midnight one.
Scott, you better take an afternoon nap. Because I I probably will.
Gosh, okay, if there's anything else, I mean, I don't want to keep us up any longer.
Uh, Don, you only, I I real quick and and as we go forward as a board and I know we talked at our housekeeping meeting. About looking at. Process procedure, standard operating procedure going forward. And as as like the Chris Burrell property, the Pinnacle Road, you know, Chris Burrell, again, the applicant. Upset that he came to the planning board, then had to defer to the zoning board of appeals somewhere along the line. I guess as we get some time to work on process and procedure, we need to take a hard look at. Flag lots and rather than have the applicant come to us. Somewhere along line, get them to the zoning board of appeals first and then they can come back to us and I. I I don't know, I don't have a good answer tonight, but it will probably come clearer as we continue working on these and. And and maybe it's something that we need to address with the comprehensive master plan update. Of allowing flag lots and spelling out the actual details of it. Of what a flag lot should look like or conform to, and then they wouldn't have to go to zoning board, they could just come to us.
Yeah. So is that something that you talk about procedure and is that something that somehow we should write up? As for a checklist or maybe have Steve work on it, see that he's done these, have written these for business before. So that we have some sort of outline procedure to look at these applications when they come in so that we see these right away.
You know, you know, Steve, I don't want to speak for you, but I know you mentioned that you've written SOPs before. And I guess my thought process is here and if you're agree, but we'll work with you. But if we get some applications under our belt and you walk through the process, you could. Better define an SOP after having been through the process yourself on the planning board. And figure out a a more streamlined process yet. Still takes care of anything that the town needs to address and takes care of the applicant.
Yeah, no problem, we talked about that before, so I'd be happy to help out Jeff out. We'll see if we can get something written up, it'll help us out for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think that we can close the meeting unless somebody has something to bring up. I'd ask for a motion to to close the meeting of May. Of the planning board. We'd like to make the motion.
I I make a motion, we close the town of Rush Planning Board meeting for May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one at ten eighteen PM.
Thank you, a second? So do I, Shelley, should I have you pull the board?
Member McPherson? Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Rock?
Hi.
Deputy Chair Werner? Chairman Sweet?
Hi, thank you, everybody.
Thanks everyone.
Have a good night.